Can everybody in the room hear me okay? I can yell louder.
I can hear you, Bob.
I won't get mad, but I'll get even. Anyway, um, thank you. I'd like to call to order the town of Camden's Select Board meeting from November 16th, 2021. We, uh, just FYI, we do, we are in a webinar format. The link is on our, uh, excuse me, on our agenda, which is in the Camden website under packets or agenda. If you want to link in, you can link in by phone. The instructions are on the agenda. Please remember to identify yourself when you're on Zoom. If you have any questions or would like to participate, please raise your hand or communicate through the Q and A function, please. Thank you.
One thing that we should mention is that we're having a little issue with the Zoom video. And so for anybody that wants to watch it, your video experience is going to be much better on YouTube. But if, for people that want to participate and give a comment, um, you know, they'll, they'll appear just fine on the, on the screen here. But, um, watching everybody is going to be better on the YouTube.
Perfect. Thank you, Allison. With that, we will enter the agenda. I may move a couple of agenda items around as FYI with the board's approval, but we're not there at this point. I'd like to start off the meeting with our agendas, we usually do with any public input on non-agenda items. Do we have anybody from the public that wants to speak to a non-agenda item? Not seeing any hands, I will move to item two on the agenda, which is the approval of the board minutes from November 3rd, 2021. Any comments, board?
I have no comments. Anybody else?
Motion?
Uh, make a motion that we approve the board minutes from November 3rd, 2021.
Second that motion?
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor? For, you know.
Well, I don't know if I can vote because I was there 75%.
Now, just for record, state that Sophie was only, not there for the entire meeting. These minutes are for the entire meeting, so it's a 4-0 vote on the approval of these board minutes. The third item is a consent agenda. On the consent agenda tonight, we have two items. One, oh, wait a minute, the appointment of the local plumbing inspector and the approval of 2022 Select Board meeting calendar. Are there any objections to these items on the consent agenda?
Yes.
Okay.
I would like to go over the calendar.
You're perfect, Max. Thank you very much. I agree with you. So there's only one item on the consent agenda. Is any, uh, any disagreement with the appointment of local plumbing inspector who will be Rosie Curtis? Not hearing any objection. That item is hereby approved. But to add to the, uh, from the consent agenda, the second, next item will be the approval of the 2022 Select Board meeting calendar, whose draft is in our packet. Do we have comments on the schedule there? Mark, you want to lead?
Yes, sir.
Just give me a second to get to it. Mark, I'm slow in the neck.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead.
We've tried in the past to stay away from major holidays so that if they're vacation weeks for people, um, it's important, um, January, because it runs, uh, I'm thinking January should leave as it is. Martin Luther King is not a big school holiday for the whole week. But in February, President's Day is on the 21st, so I'd like to keep the 4th, the 18th, the 1st, and the 15th. March, I think, is fine. When we get to April, however, um, the 18th, um, week of the 18th is, is, uh, spring break for school. So I'd like to, I suggest we move to the 12th and the 26th. And because there's five weeks in May, it allows us to go to the 10th and the 24th without running into Memorial Day and without having meetings two weeks in a row.
Okay, so I'm just going to get, make sure I get these down. April will be 12/26, and you're suggesting May will be 10/24?
Correct. Other than that, my suggestion is we move July to the 12th and the 26th, and August to the 9th and the 23rd.
Okay, one second. July 12/26 and August to 9/23.
And unfortunately, it doesn't move, it doesn't make sense to move, um, September away from Labor Day. It's not a school, you know, week off. Most people are back then because that would move October, which would move November into the week of Thanksgiving. So I think those would be my only suggestions, uh, April, May, and July, August.
Okay, the only other question I would ask is I noticed we have, as we have in the past, November 1st is election day, and November 2nd would be Wednesday, would be Select Board, what about June?
Uh, June?
Isn't June, is June 7th election day?
Yes.
So it should be June 8th?
Ah, yes.
Actually, sorry, no, it's the 14th, 15th of June.
Day is 14th?
14th.
Really?
Mm-hmm.
And then?
Okay.
The meeting would be the 15th. Okay, so we're good there.
All right. So that sounds good. So those four months, April dates, May dates, July and August, as, as noted, will be the calendar. Any other comments on the calendar from the Select Board?
Thank you.
Okay, you have a motion to accept that?
I'll make a motion that we approve the Camden Select Board schedule as just noted.
A second.
Motion made and seconded. Any, any discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor? 5-0, thank you very much. The action name is going to move around a little bit because of those reasons, but first and first, we'll take the first one. Approval to file a motion in court relative to the violation of the consent agreement for 22 Atlantic Ave. Audra, do you want to lead us in this one? Or I could do it.
So, um, we have a recommended motion from the town attorney for this. I'm just trying to pull it up. But, um, it basically comes down to the fact that we had signed a consent agreement from, um, Mr. Hefner for the tree removal on 22 Atlantic Avenue. And there's been resistance to, uh, paying the cost for the site remediation. So.
There's been no payment to date?
No payment to date for the, um, design work, the engineering design work that was incurred for the remediation activities and, um, disagreement as to whether or not the consent agreement specified that they needed to pay those costs, as well as the cost for the actual on-the-ground remediation work.
Wasn't there a payment with the signature the consent agreement is not related to design?
Yes, so it was pretty clear.
Just to be clear, I just want to be fair.
Consent agreement that, um, there were the fines and penalties for the shoreline zoning violation, the trespass violation, as well as the violation to the, uh, public tree ordinance. And so that was all paid. And then on top of that, there was an agreement that they would pay any costs associated with fines the town might incur from DEP for the, um, you know, tree clearing along the stream, as well as, um, the cost of the remediation for the site, including the engineering design, as well as the replating.
So the motion here that Bill wants to, uh, place in court is per the consent agreement, which allows for this, this legal route, which would, once that's filed, then there are choices with terms of following it through with court litigation?
Well, yeah, we'd all go to a judge to decide on, to look at the consent agreement and determine if they're in violation of it.
Okay. Yes, Allison.
So it was my understanding that the restoration plan was supposed to be approved by the Select Board, and that would be coming back to us. So I guess I'm wondering what they, what the property owners got billed for and whether that's something that we're prepared to? I mean, if it's not even the plan, if there's not even a plan that's been approved, then how can we bill them for?
I don't think we have billed them for it.
No. No, we have, we received a bill from, yeah, the engineer. So that was, that was probably my fault in the process that I didn't bring it back to you for.
Okay, well, we need to do that, I think. But regardless, the allegation of the, of Mr. Hefner is that he doesn't want to pay.
Well, yeah, his, him and his attorney are saying that what they've paid so far is all they were obligated to pay, and that's the end of it.
Okay.
I mean, I get, right, I understand that. That's clearly, uh, the main reason that we signed it and agreed to it to begin with was because of the part of the plan that was going to require them to, to do the restoration. But if it's not the, necessarily the plan that we're prepared to, um, enforce, you know, I don't know what the, I don't know what the plan is. I don't know if it's something that's reasonable. It would be easier for me to sign off on taking.
It's not really going to matter because they're asserting that they don't need to pay for any of it. So whether or not it's a plan you've approved, haven't approved, you have, like, the, the final work and what that's going to cost, they're saying, no, no more, not paying for any of it.
It would just be easier if we saw something and I, I, it sounds like something that I support, but when we're taking somebody to court, it just seems like.
No, we're filing a motion. Again, doesn't, this, this has a number of different routes, very similar to what we experienced with Rockport in the school situation. We, no, a lawsuit was filed, and we wound up settling through mediation. That could happen here also. But to get something into the courts today and to get them to address it takes time.
It takes forever. And I guess, you know, we are obligated to go through mediation with this. That is written into the consent agreement.
That's what I thought.
So that is going to happen.
Right. So once we, if we approve this, then we're approving the filing, which is normal process, and for the parties to enter into non-binding mediation.
I understand that, but there's, since there's nothing in writing in, in front of me, it's hard for me to wrap my head around what they are not agreeing to.
They're not agreeing to pay for the design for the remediation. That's, that's it.
Or the actual remediation.
Or the actual remediation.
Whatever, whatever is agreed on, whatever you all decide, they've already said, no, we dispute.
It'd just be easier if we could see something in, in writing that established that. And I'm not opposed to it and the concept of it, but I'm concerned that something's going to come back later where I'm going to read something and then I'm going to say, oh, well, I feel like we have to be prepared to defend this.
No, you're, you're defending the consent agreement that you've already approved.
We're not approving it. We're not defending, or, but we can bring the plan to the table December 1st, meeting December 10th, that's fine.
Not the plan so much as like what the, the, seeing sort of, I guess, evidence that they're being non-compliant would be.
Yeah, well, the fact.
Is this just a conversation or a?
Consent agreement, no.
It's between the, um, Hefner's attorney and the town attorney.
Right. The consent agreement is a draft, it does exist, it does say they will pay for the design and the cost of remediation. They are disagreeing with that. Period. It's just a question of whether they are required to pay for something per the consent agreement that both parties signed. There's legal disagreement.
I understand that. I'm just not usually accustomed to approving, filing a motion in court without seeing anything in, in writing of just, it's just, I just not, some, I process things slowly, I guess, and I usually like to read them ahead of time and order to. Sounds like I support the general, that Sarguen is all just hearsay, like she said, that he said that.
I get it. Are there any of the board comments about the need for this motion? No others? Do we have a motion?
Yeah.
You don't vote against this?
In that case, I move to authorize the code enforcement office and the town attorney to proceed to mediation as referenced in the consent, consent agreement and to file a land use complaint in the district court for default of the terms of the consent agreement for Hefner at 22 Atlantic Avenue.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Further discussion?
I'm just finding that this is awfully inconsistent because we so often decide to table things, when things, it's, oh, this wasn't, you know, in the agenda with the packet and the, all of the, we need to read things ahead of time. And so I just, I had, I just kind of feel like I don't have enough information even to have read the motion ahead of time. I don't necessarily think I'd, don't approve of it. It's just if I don't vote for some, I just, if I vote for something like this, I like to know.
Understand your opinion, understand completely. Any other comments or discussion?
Nope.
Alls in favor? Opposed? What's the big deal? If you don't feel comfortable, just disapprove it, that's fine. I would if I was in your shoes.
You are in my shoes.
Okay.
While you're in your shoes?
Your feet aren't that big, please, just don't know. Okay.
I just want to wait until next time, but.
But we will, because we're going to bring, we're going to have more discussion when we see the plan you're talking about next time. We can all, we still have time, because by the time this happens, it's going to take weeks.
Yeah.
It's got a long time to this, so.
This is like, I can't even tell you how bottom of the barrel this sort of stuff is with the court system right now.
We've got months before this.
And it has to be a plain vanilla, it's a plain vanilla motion anyway, it's like.
So if we, if we should at some point want to re-address because of additional information, we can do so.
Yeah, I assume it all, yeah.
But that's okay.
Okay.
All right. Well, let's, let's cover the approval of the proposal for float replacement at the head of the harbor. I believe these, in short, are the floats that are adjacent to four wind jammers at the very head of the harbor.
Yeah, and, um, Steve Pixley was going to join on Zoom.
Yep, he is, he should be able to. I have to speak up, though.
Is he there?
Yeah, we're, we're working on it here.
Okay. Okay. Well, why, well, I should wait, there he is.
Oh, oh, hold on, hold on, here, we've got the YouTube.
Yeah, people don't want to hear me this way, so I'm bad enough once.
And YouTube?
Yeah. Steve, your mouth is moving, wait a minute.
And we don't have him on screen?
We're working on it.
Can't.
Okay.
Well, yeah, you can't, she, she's working on that.
You could put the microphone for Bill Kelly in there.
Yeah. Give it to Allison in case she needs it. Steve, can you hear us?
Yeah, yes.
Can you see us?
I can see Allison sometimes.
Okay.
I told you it's not going to work.
Oh, I understand, I understand.
He's not going to be able to see us.
All right. As long as he can hear us and, and everybody can hear him, that's most important. Steve, in, in this packet, we have a proposal from, and I don't remember the company's name, for a, um, a replacement of those floats. I presume this is the replacement of the currently polystyrene floats that we have on those two, uh, platforms at the head of the harbor, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And, and the base proposal is for $96,000 with some, well, level of uncertainty on delivery, and I'm not sure about the price either. Can you elaborate on that, please?
That company has done the last three float systems for us, custom floats, and that's with delivery. They're going to, they'll deliver it to us, but we have to hire a crane to get it off their flatbeds.
Okay, but how, did that, their price excludes the crane?
Excuse me?
Does, um, their proposal of their $96,000 and change include the crane or exclude the crane?
That includes them shipping it up to us.
Okay, so no crane in that cost?
No crane.
Okay, just want to be clear, that's all. This is a, this is a Prok Marine type crane you have to bring in, or is this a shore crane?
Uh, we could use the T-Rex crane from Billy Glover's place, Rockport.
Great. Okay, just want to, just want to be clear on the, now, the deliveries have been uncertain.
We've never had a problem with that in the past.
But I thought there was something in the proposal that said that delivery.
They have said this has the longest lead time.
Right.
So what they did recommend was that, um, if, if the town wants to move forward with the float replacement, that we order them now, oh, sorry, that we order them now, and if, if the town's interested in doing, you know, the different decking, the, through flow, that that be a change order so that they can just move forward with getting the...
Base?
Yes.
Well, go ahead, Mark.
I can, I can read from the proposal. It says, because of the COVID-19 pandemic, scheduling is not possible to determine currently. Furthermore, scheduling of the ordering of materials, fabrication of components, and installation of the completed project is dependent on the booked orders, time of year, and lead times of vendors and subcontractors. CFS will make every effort to complete this project as quickly as possible. That's in there.
Okay, that make, well, that's kind of materials these days, a problem. But the, I was going to ask a question, I forgot what it was already. The $96,000 base proposal is for a complete docking system. And, you know, all parts that we need for it, with the exception of the crane to install these parts. And then there's an option for another $12,000 for a different decking material. Okay, just to be clear. And that's, I said, about 12 and change, okay?
$12,100. And so, and the different decking, what's the advantage of this?
Steve?
I have a little problem of hearing.
The, the question is about the, um, about the decking and the alternative decking. And I'm, I believe that you were probably responding to our request to look into alternative decking with the through-flow option? Is that?
Yes.
Do you have any comments you want to make on that?
Well, uh, as you can see, it's a little more expensive, and they told me that they, they personally would not recommend that because that float system is ground, grounds out twice in 24 hours. So structurally, it, um, if you'd use that, you'd lose a little bit of the, of the stability, a little strength of the structure. And, uh, so what the gain that you're going to get because of the fact that the tubs are, are not see-through, um, it's, it's not worth it.
So the, the reason, this is something that I asked him to do because, um, I mean, and I'm not sure that, the reason for it is to allow light penetration for environmental reasons. Not for aquaculture. I mean, we're not running an aquaculture program in the harbor with our water quality at this point. But the, you know, in general, it's better environmental practice, especially for floats that are in year-round, to allow light penetration, whether or not there's a, I think it's a reasonable point with the grounding out. It's also not great environmentally for it to ground out all the time, but, um...
Because it usually causes, um, damage to the certain kinds of floats, and I suspect these may be in that category, but I'm not positive.
It's not great for marine vegetation and organisms and all that stuff either, but, um...
I, I think the objective is noble. I think that in certain places where it may be more, might be more amenable to this kind of docking system, because remember, these are, these are, you know, mega, four mega boats, wind jammers, excuse me, who are there 70% of the year and whose footprint is probably total a quarter of an acre, uh, or it's a chunk and change.
Maybe they'd like to look into see-through bottoms instead, but.
Exactly, exactly. Just think how the passengers were like that.
We'll see all the fish.
But I, I think the maintenance issue is probably the bigger. But Steve, you're, you have any input on maintenance or?
I think he's right.
Okay, all right, okay.
That it's not, there are other opportunities to look for things like this, and that this piece probably corrects.
Maybe on floats, maybe. Okay, so with that, um, just, just my own identification, $96,000 for the linear footage we're talking about, kind of goes, is about 60 bucks a foot. Is that reasonable in the market today, Steve? Or maybe you don't know, but, um...
No, it is. It's very comparable. We've, I mean, last year, we had, we put up to bid, and these custom floats always comes in, uh, under everyone else. They have a good operation, and that's why we go with them.
And if I may ask one last question, Steve, what is the life expectancy of those floats?
I would say it's about 25 to 30 years.
Okay, that's pretty good. 25, 30, $96,000.
Oh, it's not.
And one of the reasons that is is because it's in a very protected spot as far as storms.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Did we want to talk a little bit about the disposal plan for the current floats? That came up last time.
Polystyrene?
Yep. Reminding everyone that the purpose of this is to try to prevent the escape of polystyrene into the environment. And so just, you know, giving or selling these floats as is, the current ones, to another town without an ordinance wouldn't be consistent with the goals. Right? I mean, I know, I know there's this whole idea of like not wasting things, which is, which is great, um, but, you know, salvaging whatever is possible, I think would be good, but sending the blue styrofoam off to, you know, somebody to use in the same way that we're mandating that we don't use, we probably shouldn't do this time, right?
So usually, so Steve, usually they go to the, to the landfill?
Yeah, and we did, we did have a conversation with the transfer station manager about the policy there, where in the past, they've been telling people that they need to cut up the blue styrofoam into one by two pieces before taking it to the transfer station, which is also the exact opposite of what we're trying to do, like take a chainsaw to your floats, um, after replacing them for environmental reasons. So they, they, there, there is a sort of plan in place to, to work on taking that without causing people to.
Cut them.
Cut them. And that's going to be a transfer station board conversation. But, um, the other option would be for Camden, just to, if it comes at an additional cost, would be for Camden to, it's not going to be a lot, but to collect it separately. If for some reason the other towns that are part of the transfer station, um, you know, are like, well, we don't want to be giving anything for free for Camden's ordinance, which has happened in the past, um, we could say, okay, well, we've figured out that in order to collect this separately in containers, it's going to be an additional, you know, $1,500 for two loads, Deco Main or something, then we might look into, to funding that ourselves. But it looks like they're going to be able to figure out a system over there.
Cool.
Good, thank you.
Thanks, Allison.
Audra, just to be clear, what, what budget fund is this coming out of?
So we budgeted for this through the capital improvement program, and we also have money in the harbor projects reserve account.
So there's $96,000 plus the cost of the crane will all come out of those accounts?
Yes.
Okay, because the crane's going to be X, at least $3,000 or $4,000, at least. Okay.
Ready for a motion?
Yes.
I would like to, I would like to make a motion that we approve the, uh, name of the company is CFS, CFS, uh, proposal to replace our, our floats. Oops. At a cost of $96,342.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Alls in favor? 5-0, thanks, Steve. And Steve, we have a couple of other items coming soon, so if you'd hang around, I'd appreciate it. On the harbor committee, et cetera. The, um, the next item I want to move to is because I like to take actually formerly tabled items first, is the, we have discussed a meeting or two ago, the verification of license agreements for 17, 21, and 25 Main Street on the public landing. The Main Street's not on the public landing, but anyway, um, Audra, would you please, the three licenses are in the packet, would you summarize this for us?
It's only two.
Oh, it's only two?
It's only two.
Okay.
So the third one was the, the license agreement that had to do with, um, you know, allowing the decks to be built on town property, as well as the landscaped area. And I thought that's a bigger conversation for another time, so let's just focus on the agreements that are specific to the parking issue.
And which two are those?
So that's, that covers 17 through 21 and 25 Main Street.
Oh, okay.
It's different.
The decking also has parking involved in it.
It does. It does.
Yeah.
It does. What Audra's saying is, it's a little more complicated because there's other, these, if I'm understanding this correctly, these, I read it correctly, these are only about parking. These license agreements that are dated.
1998. 1998 and 2002.
Only those through the.
Well, I think there were some update, there have been some updates.
I'm sure there has, I'm sure there has.
But I think they say essentially the same thing. But I think they say essentially the same thing.
I'm sure there has.
I mean, I'm just not, the, if the idea's fairness here, that, that one that include, I think a couple of them include decking. It was, I agree, it's very complicated and that some of it would be treated differently than other things, but it, it seems like we would at least treat the parking elements of all of those agreements the same. So no matter what, the agreement that has all of the landscaping and park and decking stuff in there would need to be changed. I mean, we could say, at least put on, if we're going to do something different with the parking for the other agreements, it seems like we shouldn't, it's, it's not fair to say, well, because your agreement has landscaping involved in it, you get to keep your parking.
Oh, yeah, and I'm, I'm not suggesting that at all. I, you know, I think that part of the exercise we're going through now is to try and sort of like clear the deck so any special agreements that have to do with parking are removed. So while we're doing this parking study, we can start from a fresh place to figure out how we're going to deal with that issue in the future.
Okay, just to be clear though, are we talking about removing parking from all? In that case, that would mean one license would not be revoked, it would be rewritten to only cover the.
I would say you revoke them all.
Yeah.
But I'm just saying at this point, it's very clear that these two particular agreements, because they just have to do with parking, you know, just go through the process of revoking them because it's a 90-day notice period.
Understood.
And then the other one where it's more complicated, you have parking intertwined with, you know, land use there, you, we sort of just at least get something in process where we're kind of figuring out the issues with the, the deck and the landscaped area and the parking.
True.
We still need that 90 days' notice though, so I don't see why we wouldn't just start that and then there's nothing, there's nothing to say that, that after 90 days, we have to tear people's decks off or anything like that. It's, it's just saying that this agreement as it is, is not, you know, it's a notice that that is not going to be honored anymore, but that doesn't prevent us, I don't see how we can leave one of those agreements alone, but take the, with, you know, how do we get rid of the parking part of that agreement without getting rid of the?
Which one is the number for the one that has the decking and the, and the parking as a package?
You're going to have to give me a few minutes.
Yeah, if you look on the map.
Just want to make sure we're referring to the right names. I get 17 and 21 through 25 on Main Street.
It's hard to see on the map, actually.
I mean, I'm, I'm just not convinced that we have a completely comprehensive view of what all these agreements are. I think some of them have been updated more recently than we.
So it's, that's specific to 11 through 19 Main Street and 21 Main Street.
21 Main Street is on this list.
11 through 19 Main Street and 21 Main Street.
So which ones have parking only? I understand.
17 and 25.
I'm getting confused because either my reaction says 17, 21, and 25.
I'm talking about the agreement that Allison referenced that is specific to the decking in the landscaping area.
It's 11 through 19.
11 through 19 and 20, what did I say, 21?
No.
I don't understand, it's getting complicated to split them all up because I'm not sure that we understand totally this.
Well, and I just want to, now that I'm reading through the license that you're talking about, Allison, it doesn't have parking in it.
Which one is that?
Why are we going to, it could be parking though, I mean, if parking is so valuable, then I don't, I just don't understand why.
Well, if there is, we're trying to confirm that there is one that has a combination of decking and parking.
No, no.
It doesn't?
There is not.
Okay.
There's the ones that I have in the packet, that's parking only.
Okay, so.
All of those buildings have decking on them, but why do we want to keep some agreements that allow private use of kind of semi-large areas?
I'm not saying, I'm not saying that you want to keep them. I'm just saying, last time I brought them all to you to revoke, you said you were uncomfortable with it because there's, the landscaping one was too.
Correct.
Complicated and you wanted to have a plan for how you moved it forward.
We fundamentally have two choices. We can qualify that all, all licenses that specify parking only at this point, we revoke. Or we can say revoke all licenses, but the idea that during the 90 days, if there is some elements in there regarding decking and it's like we want to revise and reissue a license for that in some form, we can do that. But that's kind of the two options you got here.
And, I mean, some of that green landscaped space, I don't know that the agreement necessarily said that the town isn't allowed to do anything with it if it's being maintained by a private property owner. It does feel that we should relieve the owner of the responsibility of maintaining it and also.
Ask the town to do maintenance on it, particularly after the storm.
Like the picnic table, for instance, that is right over by the, by the, the trees that you have the pool of water there, that is like a dangerous situation right now. People love having the picnic tables there, but it's so much traffic right there that it's like, it's, it's all dirt and it's on a slope and people could, I mean, putting a picnic, the town should be able to have the freedom to possibly, if they so deem to put a picnic table in that other landscape space.
Again.
That's not in the scope of the agreements we are looking to revoke, right?
It should, I mean, I thought we were looking at all of them because.
Well, I think that's the cleanest way. If you just take all, it's a 90-day notice that we intend to revoke the licenses.
Yeah, and I mean, I'm going, if, if you don't do it tonight, I'm going to bring that agreement back to you at the next meeting and ask you to revoke that as well, so.
Right, that's what I mean, there's no sense doing it in sequence, at least I'm hearing. If, because there is this time period in which we can address, especially the one that has some elements in it that we want to be, make sure we're doing correctly.
I think, and probably we might have some insight from.
Yeah, yeah, I'm certainly welcome any public comment, Joellen, if you'd like to speak to this, please feel free. Would you, Joellen, would you please come up here if you don't mind? Because we have to have you address us like it's, means something to us. Introduce yourself, please, and please, go ahead.
I am Joellen Stammen, and we have 21 Main Street, 19 and 21 Main Street. And 19 is really not involved in this, since the upstairs of our building.
Oh.
21 Main Street.
Okay.
So we bought our building, I think 2012.
Exactly which one did you buy, just to be clear?
21 Main Street, but 19 Main Street is part of that.
Got it.
And we did come here to have the license put in our name to just update that.
Sure.
And so we parked there with the agreement that we would take care of the plowing in the winter. And we sell rugs and I have, you know, we have anywhere from 150 to 300 rugs come from India, which needs a box truck to come up to that deck. Otherwise, that's going to be on the street.
Right.
And to carry those in, it takes us a lot of time just to do it that way. We would be blocking up that Main Street, so that's just one consideration.
Absolutely.
And my understanding is before, the deck was there before we bought the building.
Sure.
And, but there were always, I mean, the door is up high, so we have to get to that somehow.
Oh, yeah.
And so I know that the village shop was licensed three spots and we were licensed two spots and then, I'm not sure the number.
17.
17 was given one. And that's just the way it has been, my understanding when we took over, was it, was our responsibility to keep it clear in case of fire. If you had cars parking there and people gone and there were fire, a fire, the fire trucks would have a harder time getting in. So that was something that was told us. And so we just want to know, like, why is this being done at this time? And how are you going to use that? I mean, I hear you're talking about the landscape area, which probably would have to be dynamited because I think it's ledge if you're going to use that for parking because it goes up.
Right, right.
Yeah.
There's a, there's a downtown master plan version that shows parking there and we always kind of joke about that a little bit, that like it's not that feasible to have parking there, but I think, you know, somebody might like to sit there.
And then the area that we park in isn't very wide, so it's not like you're going to get cars like this. So anyways, that's our two cents.
One more thing.
Sure, go ahead.
If you're going to do that, it seems like you should have a plan, and there's no plan.
Before you revoke?
You've got 90 days to revoke those plans.
So is there a plan?
Well, Audrey, maybe you can introduce the parking, the global parking.
Yeah.
Good questions.
Woody or.
Sure, sure. But maybe you could introduce the whole parking issue because this is more macroscopic. It's the reason why, by the way, you know, just as, as leading with her chin as it were, all the, all the parking for the employees of our here no longer have the space next to the building and no longer have space across the street. They go to a remote lot.
During the summer.
During the summer, yeah. But, you know, it's just, maybe you could elaborate on that, where this parking thing is, is tracking this, the edification they need to have.
Yeah, so we're, we're doing a parking study for the downtown area and we're more than halfway through it at this point. And so part of it is looking at all the different public and private parking lots, as well as on-street parking lots in the downtown core, and looking at what's, what's utilized or what's considered overutilized, target utilization as well as underutilized. And I'm sure it's no surprise to you at all that the public landing, aside from on-street parking, right on Main Street and Elm Street, is the most heavily used and overutilized lot in all of town.
Yeah.
So it's, it's really sort of also looking at what sort of historic agreements do we have around parking and how like, how equitable is that given the high demand on the public landing? So that's one of the things that we are looking at right now, but I do think you have a really good point about the loading and unloading. And even historically, before these agreements were in place, there was always sort of a gravel area where the businesses had the ability to load and unload goods on the public landing. So I do think that's something that should be preserved.
I agree. I presume these shipments you have are not frequent, but you know, whenever they are.
Yeah.
But is there any reason why, if they, if they should lose this ability to the parking area, that's, I assume that's where the truck goes, is where the parking area, that that space can't be, like we do with many other things in town, we just, just cone that off for the delivery of your deliveries, that the town has to work with you one way or another, but I just want to make.
I don't, I mean, there's, there's many ways that we can keep that so it's clear for loading and unloading. And I, I do think that it's beneficial that that's there because, you know, like you're saying, it's, it's important to have those trucks off Main Street and.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. I would think it's essential, but that's something that could be agreed to by the parties, by the way, to have that ability. If you have those, it sounds like deliveries. We're, we're really dealing with the parking space availability thing and not trying to, we understand, people need to do things that may take those parking spaces away for a day or two. Okay, we have to deal with that, but every day, that's, that's what we're wrestling with. That's all it is. Allison, go ahead.
I mean, I also think there's a larger, this all came about because of the parking and people saying what's fair and what isn't and who gets free parking and, but there, there is that like larger plan for the, for the public landing and a lot of disagreement or different ideas about, you know, where there should be more green space, for instance, or where there should be more picnic tables or where, and like, a lot of people come to us and say, well, why can't we have kayak racks down in the, you know, the public landing? Or why can't we have more, that area in particular, there's been a lot of comments about more, more green space because it's getting so, you know, trodden on. And so I feel like there, there just needs to be a little bit more of a like public conversation about what the goals are for that area. In particular, you know, when the, just listening to the harbor walkway conversations, for instance, when, you know, there are town committees that were working on designing that and, you know, this isn't specific to the parking, but there's just this feeling that that's all private property there. And so it's really kind of limiting the discussion of like, okay, could we have a walkway here or couldn't we? And I, I think most people haven't even realized that some of that is public property. But I agree that you have a really good point about, you know, some of the unloading and, you know, the sort of balance of all the activity that goes on down there. And we want to like blow any of that up, but more just have a, you know, like public transparent conversation about how we're, how we're allocating that space.
I guess one thing I'd like to point out is that if you're, you haven't developed a plan and you've got plenty of time to revoke the licenses, why now? Is it going to sit there for another year?
I think it's to sort of allow that, a public, a plan to, to be developed. I mean, this is a key thing where public input is really necessary. I don't, I think what we're doing right now is saying, do we want the sort of freedom to, to look at a different plan? And that's all that we're doing by revoking these particular licenses. And it's not, I don't think there's, anybody's going to necessarily come and say, everything has to change tomorrow. It's just the formal process of a, of a, of a notice that this needs to be renegotiated. And it's always possible that more input comes in and that we come up with the same agreement again, but it does seem to make sense that these agreements that we have with people, there's no, right now, there's no process that kind of triggers them to be reviewed on any kind of basis. And so a lot of us that weren't around, or townspeople that weren't around to have the knowledge of them, they don't even know why. And so then people start to feel like they're, you know, just like allegations of special deals and it's not, it's usually not the case of what's going on. It's just been so long since anybody's been paying attention.
Right. I think the point about plan is a good one. I agree with you, but remember, we're dealing with a spatial landscape here. And a spatial landscape, obviously, the more space you have, the more broad the, the, and taking, having these, this area available for planning is what we're really, that's what I hear we're looking to do.
I understand the freedom to, to be able to do that, but you do have that knowing that you can revoke these licenses anytime.
You know, it's a chicken and egg, you know, honestly. Well, I mean, because if we, if we approach it that way, we'll be having this meeting a couple of months from now, revoking the licenses. So I don't see what there's a big advantage of doing that because we know we need the parking in that area. We need the public space in that area, the landing, as Audrey addressed. And I find it difficult to believe that any plan would not take those parking spaces. I just, I just don't see it. That's it. I mean, it's simple, it's simplistic, but I, I get your point. I know you'd like to see what it's going to look like before you say, yeah, let's throw these parking spaces away. I get that, but I really believe it's a chicken and egg.
No, I don't even think he was saying that. I was thinking, if it's going to be down the road, why do we have to leave so early? You know, if you have the freedom to come in and do it.
Yeah, you know, it's a good point, by the way. I think you got, we have 90 days to play with and during that 90 days, we can, even beyond the 90 days, I'm not sure we're going to be down there with shotguns making you not park there while we're planning to relay out that area.
Okay.
I don't see why, what's, is there a trigger that I'm missing? If we were to revoke the licenses now, there's a 90-day trigger and at the end of 90 days, who knows how fast things go, we're likely not to have a replan in that area, but they understand that it's coming. And if they were parking there on the 91st day, we're not going to be giving them tickets.
I mean, if you just tell us, we'd be out, so.
It might not be a good place for, I can see why it's for public parking, like three x, it's not.
It's not the best.
It's not great, but also can I point out that if you look at the, the landing and what's sort of heavily used, like people want, they want a space on the public landing where they can sit and they can, and a lot of people want to go over there and they're jammed up a bunch of, like against a bunch, like six cars that are parked in that area, so.
More green space there and more like.
But I'm hearing.
There's just like a lot of competition for use on the public landing, whether it be parking, whether it be green space, like there's just a lot of different uses that I don't think that we're, when the agreements were given in the late 90s, early 2000s.
I didn't understand.
It wasn't the same.
And the subtle difference, Audrey, is only, is only here that I hear is, is revoking the licenses is fine, going ahead with planning for doing whatever with the parking spaces, whether it's landscape, whatever, but you know, keeping, the 90 days doesn't have to be a trigger for not parking there.
We refuse to even discuss an application for, there was, there was somebody who wanted to have a, a small vendor like a popcorn.
Yes.
And we, and we said, at that time, I didn't actually know about these agreements, but we said, we weren't, you know, she, she did a whole application and we said, ooh, there's just so much going on in the public landing. We don't know if we have, we don't have a process for determining, you know, can we take a food truck down there? Can somebody, you know, sell food? And then that's. And then that sparks a conversation of like, well, how if we decided that harbor dogs is okay? How do we decide that any of this is okay?
Right, right.
And that was one of the spaces that she had wanted to be.
Right.
But we realized, you know, we don't, we don't have a process for even deciding how much is too much or, and so I think, I just kind of like a fairness thing that we are basically saying, no, if we're going to say this is reserved for private parking and you can't have your popcorn stand here, I don't know what the right answer is.
The only thing I heard was if, when we're ready to do whatever, we give them, you know, if it's even before or after 90 days, we ask them to, you know, not park there anymore.
Yeah, I mean, we're not just going to start like heavy-handedly ticketing people.
Exactly.
We're going to give them notice, especially when they're--
We'll notify you when it's time to go and whatever the hell it is.
It's a good thing we don't have a lot of dressers and refrigerators to move out, like a house, so we can leave the next day when you tell us.
And we'll certainly make sure that we, you know, preserve your ability to load and unload your goods from there.
Okay, that's great.
Yeah, and we need to understand what that means also because in terms of usage of those spots, if we're going to have trucks coming there, then probably we won't be able to, I mean, it's going to preempt usage of that space for something else.
This is an issue Mrs. Bach was actually very frustrated with. She paid all of this, and I know that people get sick of me going back into the archives and the history, but we have pages and pages and pages of correspondence between Mary Louise Curtisbach and the Olmsted firm and the town because she paid for the town to clean up the public landing and implement this Olmsted plan. And the condition was that we were supposed to slowly over time, starting in 1930, implement the Olmsted plan for the public landing, which is very different than what we ended up with. And it included about half of the, half of the public landing is green space. And the town, looking at all the correspondence back and forth, every time the Olmsted brothers would come up with something, they would say, well, this is okay, but we object to the amount of green space. And slowly, they, it was more and more that was taken out of it. And then one year she said, well, the town has now decided to let the businesses have a back entrance and so we can't do our community building anymore. We can't do this and we can't do that. So, I mean, it's an issue that's been going on for a long time and it did show me too that there was obviously the history going back even further than your agreements of letting Main Street businesses use that as a right of way. So it's been in contention for quite some time.
I guess the bottom line is we understand and we agree that this loading and unloading that occurs on occasion needs to be considered in our plan going forward, which should be most important to you. If we were to put up a beautiful stone wall, that's not going to be smart for anybody. So we get it. But I think to the broader question that was brought up about all licenses revoked and working on the plan going forward versus just picking the ones that have only parking in it, it doesn't seem to make a lot of sense to me.
Yes, and I mean, I'm going to recommend you revoke them all for the, just the same reasons we were discussing. So I guess it's, you know, up to the board tonight whether you feel comfortable including that other license as well.
Well, I think I do only because I want everybody to know, including the licensees that are not here, that we understand there are some things out there like decks, like doors. We're not going to go attacking those, right? We're not going to, we're not, we're really, the primary focus here is the parking part first.
I would say it's the parking, but also it's the, it's the space that I think there's a perception that it's private.
Oh, yeah.
And it's public. And because of all the competing--
I see.
--needs and uses on the public landing, I think that it's, it's time to sort of take it back for public purposes.
Okay. All right. Again, board, any other questions? Otherwise, we should move to either all or none, in my opinion.
I would agree with that.
How about a motion?
I will make a motion that we revoke the, all the parking licenses, specifically parking.
So you're not doing all of them?
No, I mean, revoke all the parking spots for all of the parties involved, but we're only dealing with the parking spaces they have, not decks or other such at this point.
I think--
Go ahead.
Somebody else spell it out better than I can?
No, no.
I think how we renegotiate any agreements going forward is a sort of second step, but that for tonight, the cleanest thing to do would be to send out a notice of revocation for all of the licenses that they are.
And those would be 11 through 19, 17, 21, 25. Is that all of them? That's really--
That we're aware of right now.
Yeah, okay. But revoking all of them with the understanding that it's going to be, especially the ones that have more than parking involved, there's going to be some discussion with the parties going forward. That's the difference from, it's not just limited to, we're just revoking 90-day notice to revoke all of them. 11 through 19, 17, 21, 25.
Everything he said.
A second.
Any further discussion? Holes in favor? 5-0. Thank you, thank you, guys. Good to see you.
Thank you for coming.
Well, I'll use that opportunity to, getting repeated messages from Anita actually saying, yes, so we're aware, anybody that's watching on Zoom, we're aware that you're having visual issues for seeing the whole select board and that you can only see Steve Pixley. But we're aware, that's a problem for some of you. This is a great vehicle for, if you want to give a comment, then you can be part of Zoom. If you're just watching the meeting tonight, YouTube is going to be a better experience for you or a different one.
For the moment, yes. Onto the agenda, again, back to next item, which was the action regarding the amendment to the day sailor license agreement regarding the current permit parking that is included in the individual licenses. A few weeks ago, the meeting that I only saw on TV, there was a discussion about revoking those licenses in the agreement and it was a tie vote, 2-2 that time. And obviously by rules of order, unless one of the two devoted to maintain it as is, were willing to listen to additional dialogue, that option is not on the table. Not hearing anybody jumping up saying, I want to listen to further arguments about revoking the licenses. The other option is, as we have, to relieve the congestion and problem we have with more parking on the landing, there is the option of considering maintaining the licenses but limiting them to specific parking lots as an option.
I'm so confused by what you, a little bit, well, a little bit confused by what you just said and the part about one of the parties that didn't want to--
Rules of order require that any vote that's occurred, happens to come in a tie, that issue is closed.
For how long?
Forever.
What?
Yes, Allison.
As ended in a tie vote can never be brought up again?
Not the same idea, no. Unless one of the two parties has voted in certain ways. That's Robert's rules of order. Otherwise, otherwise you'd have, otherwise you'd have issues that were tied that could be, keep bringing, brought up and brought up until, you know, somebody got what they wanted. That's the reason why they have those kinds of regulations in Robert's rules.
Robert's rules is a sort of guiding principle, it's not a law.
And we're following Robert's rules.
So the topic of day sailor parking can never be brought up in Camden again?
Not an item of revoking the license as it's in the agreement, yes.
I'm not going to sell this one tonight. So we can't talk about it?
Yes, we can talk about it, anything you want to talk about.
It can be reframed and re-presented as--
It can be reframed and re-presented as a Robert's rules.
You can't resubmit the exact same motion.
It's--
Oh, so you're just, this is, this is a process.
Yep, yep. That's all. No big deal.
We're so strict about certain--
Well, remember, I think some of the day sailors who are here might remember, a tie vote that occurred back when we increased the windjammer number of weekly, well, trips per year, excuse me, from three to 15. And there was a, there was a lot of discussion one evening about changing that. And that night, there was a tie vote and that issue died. It's the same thing here. We never brought it up because somebody was missing and might be interested in going left or right. I know it's awkward, but you, the reason is, it's pretty basic.
Okay, I'll just concede that one and then we can--
You don't have to concede.
I mean, it might be better for everybody's time.
Well, I just, I just think there, but I think in terms of readdressing this, there is the option, keeping the license but limiting it to certain parking lots.
It's not, and I just want to, this is not a license, it's a parking permit that's assigned as part of the license.
I'm sorry, I meant part of the license agreement.
We're not going to revoke the licenses.
No, we're not going to vote, no. No, 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 we're not going to vote the licenses. It's whether we revise the license to provide the permit parking, single space per, one place for day sailors, I recall. And that's probably, well, six or seven, depending on who you count today, parking spaces on the landing that, well, they're not reserved, they're just a parking permit to park in that area all day long and to--
I just say I don't even have a parking permit for the town of Camden.
I was going to, back to my original comment.
Either do we.
Yeah, exactly.
No, we don't, we don't.
I also do have like a public comment that I need to read at some point.
About this?
Well, I don't know if we're, I guess if we're talking about it or not.
About what?
I'm having trouble following this, like what the goal of this is and what we're--
Well, I'm just explaining the reason why it was put on the agenda because there's still concern about, as we dealt with, well, the town led the charge with Audra leading the charge and all of our town employees do not park conveniently here across the street all day. They have to park in Washington Street or Knox--
To park in the Knox Mill parking--
Knox Mill parking lot. And it's all about trying to provide better parking options for the public. That's all this is about. I'm not trying to stick it in anybody's ear. And the option would be to, one option, you may have others, just keep, we have their permit and the permit could be limited to certain parking lots.
Like the Knox Mill part, like the all-day parking lot?
Yep.
What could that do on?
I'm just, I just put--
You need a permit to park there.
I, that's, I'm just putting it out, that's the only option or options like that that we have to look at at this point in time, if the board wants to look at.
I would like to look at it, I guess.
Yeah. I would too. No, no, I mean, again, it's the issue of fairness and access to the public to those most desirable spots that we're trying also, you know, to distribute with equity.
Right. So that's the, that's the only thing we could act on at this point in time, or something like that. I'm just, that's just one idea.
And I'd also like to make the point that when I re-looked at the windjammer agreements, they also, during times when they're not, when they're, when they're in their berths, the windjammers are given one parking space per boat.
On the town landing?
Yes.
Or a permit, is it the same thing?
Sorry, yeah, one permit per boat on the public landing, when the boats are berthed.
So is it specific to the public landing because--
Yes.
Well, I think for the ones that are at the head of the harbor, they don't use, they use Atlantic Ave, they don't use the landing.
Which is also a problem.
Yes.
So I wasn't under the impression that we were only targeting--
Day sailors.
They were not, yeah, the idea is not to only target day sailors, the idea is not to only target the public landing. The idea is to target the, like, the two-hour parking--
I mean, my goal was to get rid of special parking permits for anybody. So the fact that we're assigning more parking permits regardless of where they are, I mean, I wouldn't, that's not an optimal outcome, but I mean, I think it's better than what we have right now because I think--
That's your point, you're correct.
The hope is that we're working towards a system where we do have some sort of permit agreement for employees in the downtown and it's putting them in a position where it's more advantageous for them to park in lots that are more conducive to all-day parking like Knox Mill, like hopefully we could come to some sort of agreement with Camden Parking Company or the Congregational Church or the Christian Science Church or, you know, whoever that might be, but not right in the downtown core where people want to park, that are visitors or--
Those can turn over quickly and the people that are going to be there all day as much as possible are in places that are, you know, slightly less valuable for other reasons.
Right.
Now, what about the parking permits that we give to town employees, if any?
I don't believe we issue them anymore. I mean, for the, on the landing we do, but again, just like, you know, me asking all the people who work in this building to go park in the Knox Mill lot, I would be asking those people to park in a remote lot and walk in.
Yeah, I think, I mean, that's what we want to try to make clear is the idea, we know, there's no interest in targeting any specific group, it's that we know, and I'm sure everybody that works down there and spends a lot of time down there knows that there's rampant abuse by many entities and that it's in-- Yeah.
I'm sorry, Steve was going like this.
And so, you know, there are a few, just like for the Opera House, we identified, okay, well, the code enforcement officer probably needs a permit because they're coming all the time. There are, you know, a few things around that's like, well, they might need a special privilege to park, but it's very few compared to the number of special privileges that were being given. So it does seem to make sense to, like, try to attack some of that right now, too. Are you, we're not allowed to take away parking permits tonight, is that?
Well, we are, the select board, I already explained it, the select board already voted on that, taking away parking permits on the agreements.
What if we reframe it as taking away special parking permits for, for town employees and for, you know, there are many ways to reframe an issue.
Yeah, there is, but, you know, I think this, well, I mean, I'm listening, I'm listening, but I want to make it clear, you made a good point. This is not just about the day sailors, also the windjammer because they are using two-hour spaces.
Needs to be reevaluated, too.
Well, I think, I think that we're on a mission to eliminate parking permits, we know that, we just discussed it with the business owner, free parking permits. I think as a minimum, we should at least require any permits are out there to be, or any parking to be at Knox Mill, permit and no permit. And I just think that's smart because, you know, that's, we're trying to be consistent. And I'm also trying to be, you know, I'm listening if there's any creative ways of rephrasing, but remember, there is that regulation that I feel very strongly about, we're not going to revisit something just because somebody just showed up that might want to vote the other way. That's just not the way it works.
For Co-Road, maybe they can all have a special permit for Co-Road, park at the Co-Road parking lot, I don't know.
No, no, I agree. I think the idea, again, is looking at the parking situations and having as few as possible exceptions to usage of public parking spots by private businesses.
And I think--
Using them for free.
And I think, Steve, Steve, you there?
No, Steve checked out.
Steve, there's always the issue that comes up with all players that they, you know, want to have access to, you know, drop something off of their boats. I presume in my mind that we have, we have loading space down there that can be used for short time periods for anybody as long as you can, including the fishermen's area, as long as it's managed and through you, in terms of when they can, when they can't utilize those spaces or simply to park behind the Harbor Master Shed to do some deliveries or drop-offs.
Well, for starters, we have, we have too many fishermen spots because we only have five fishermen that are active. But there's, I mean, we have 11, 10 to 11 permits for fishermen, but only five actually are fishermen.
Well, I think--
Taking some of those spaces away or allocating them to day sailor, you know, load and unload.
Having more of an area of shared--
Yes.
--loading and unloading space and whether that's, sometimes that's going to mean leaving the car there for a little bit. They all share dock space. And, I mean, the idea of the loading and unloading is not just for fishermen or for day sailors or for windjammers, it's also for the public, too. It's not as, it's not as extensive, but you do see people using the--
You do.
The lift and the--
You do, you do. You do. Well, I guess to the point of the commercial fishing, that's on the agenda, but not tonight because I agree with you. We may have to revisit the number of parking spaces that are allocated, as you said, 11 to commercial and determine what, if anything, should be done with those and should be reduced and how they use, that's another discussion for another night. But I just wanted to point out that there are, you know, I know that these people need to get stuff to their boats on occasion and we have to work through you, Steve, to make sure they have access to do that. It's not about this parking permit thing that we have, what we're discussing right at the moment. But it still remains, at least in my mind, clearer, cleaner to propose, as we do with the town, that this parking is at Knox Mill.
Sure.
Or someplace. Audra, you pick.
I mean, I would, I would suggest Knox Mill.
I think that's most legitimate. I think that's most legitimate, and that way, we can continue to take a major step, another major step in our attempts to, you know, respond to the public, respond to a program we're already involved in, in terms of parking, and in particular, in relation to the most, one of the most important parking spots in town, which is the landing. Wish we controlled most of it, but everybody should know also that the other side of the landing over towards, you know, the restaurants and stuff is not owned by the town. Correct?
A portion of it.
It's not.
That's a, that's a complicated...
Yes, Mark, go ahead.
I'd like, we, we have a lot of the day sailors here.
Sure.
I'd like to have, get, have them have the opportunity to talk to us about...
Sure.
How they feel about this.
Oh, shoot, and I also have a comment to read.
Anybody have any comments? I don't see any, I don't see any hands.
I could read the comment first, if you want.
Go ahead. Is it on this, Allison?
It is, yeah, it's on, obviously, it's on this, so I can, I can read it.
Please come up, please come up.
This is from Ramito, who's not able to have time tonight, wanted me to read this, a couple of questions for the board. Number one, on what study or data have you based the decision to remove only the now six day sailor parking permits? Two, according to town data, the town of Camden issues 27 parking permits every year, including six permits for windjammer, seven day sailors, five Harbor Master and his deputies, and nine fishermen. Is the Select Board planning to remove any of the other 20 parking permits? I think, yeah, I'm not saying we haven't dealt with, I bet, I'm still going to read them, because it's, that's just the way we...
That's funny.
Under our day sailing license agreement, none of our employees are allowed to park at the town landing, not even for two hours. Oh, right, that's a good point. If our permits are removed, ooh, can our employees park at the parking lot like everyone else for two hours? Interesting, thank you, please let, okay.
Aaron, please.
Is that all three of them?
I did, I just forgot to say the number three.
Do you want me to tell you? I brought it, just in case. Because it kind of overlaps a little bit, it just seems like, you know, and that, he's speaking...
Did I not read it correctly, or do you have the same...
You have a third one?
I did have a third one, but I...
Aaron, Aaron, would you please make...
Number three was, under our day sailing license agreement, none of our employees are allowed to...
Aaron, would you please go ahead?
Yeah, so, hi, I'm Aaron Lincoln, I own the schooner OLAD.
And Owl.
And the Owl, yep, sorry, I was trying to read Ramito's question and talk at the same time, bad, what do they call that? Anyway, doesn't matter.
Multitasking.
I was bad multitasking. So the fun thing about this is, I've been having this same conversation for 22 years.
I got it.
Yeah. And...
You don't look that old.
You know, you'd be surprised. And so, even more uniquely, I worked for one of the first families who, you know, had a permit in town, so the OLAD's been here since 1986, so I also talked to the town, I mean, the town manager who put the rules in place, Roger Moody, was here when I started. So like, I've been through this whole gamut. So, the reasons that those permits were down there over the years, primarily the biggest one was having a place for shelter if something went really wrong. And if you can imagine your kid selling tickets down there, and there's a lightning storm, and he knows that he has to catch a line to the boat, and he has to be able to see it, it's really great if he's not in the parking lot any longer than he has to be. But, I mean, that was kind of like the premise of it. So, it was a lot more laid back in those days, and another thing, well, in one way. In another way, none of those good old boys that used to own businesses down there that I can picture in my head from all those years ago would have ever let their employees park in the public landing, because they just fired them. And if anybody knows me, because of that clause, when I hire people, I let them know that if they park down there and they don't have the permit in their window, and the permit's being used somewhere else, then they will get fired. Because I'm not trying to put 900 people down there.
No.
The other reasons, over the years, were to load and unload supplies, to have a place to be able to remove and put your trash on there, you know, like, basically, every day, I probably take three bags of trash. At one point, we were allowed to use the dumpster, we are not anymore. So, all that has to come back and forth, it all goes to my house eventually, although that nice little recycling center down there might start getting a lot more bottles, because I just took all the bottles and donated them to the local bottle drive, and it was impressive, fill the truck more, I just couldn't get there more than once this year. And booth storage, because there really is nothing down there to put booths where you operate your business out of, so you run out of brochures, you run to your car. I mean, those were the four reasons. There wasn't, as far as I know, anything different, somebody, you might know as well, different, but that was kind of the mainstay of it.
Okay.
I would say one distinction between the windjammers and the day sailors, and I'm not sure about the fishermen, about those permits, is that we actually pay rent to be on-town property. Like, unlike other people that are in this list, like the town employees are not paying rent to be down there. The grandfathered apartments, which I think are maybe what you guys were talking about this evening, and Main Street businesses that have, I think, some parking spots in there, because I remember this coming up one other time, those places also, as far as I know, aren't paying any rent to the town. And I don't think the fishermen do either, I think that's a decree that's actually done by the state, that we have to, we have to allow parking spots for fishermen, but I don't remember those rules completely, because that hasn't come up in a really long time.
Part of the grants that have been received over the years for different infrastructure.
Stipulates, stipulates, preference to commercial fishermen.
I think that you have to maintain a certain amount of spots per capita in a town.
Yeah, it makes sense, it's, no, not demeaning any of your great businesses, but they, kind of, one of the cores of Maine is commercial fishing.
Yeah, and then, I know from past work with harbor committees, and also being part of the dredging process, and at one point, I even helped rewrite the harbor ordinances with a couple other smarter people, Mr. Ellison and Sandy Welty, did it twice. But I also remember that there's like certain allocations for commercial businesses within the harbor, and I'm not sure if that also maintains into public spaces that egress commercial businesses. So, that's some other question I have always had.
Commercial businesses, what was that?
Any maritime business, like, has a federal licensing, there is a certain...
Right.
You, you have to provide space.
Right.
15%?
Okay.
Do we have any of that?
Where commercially federally licensed vessels...
They are, they are, they are, yeah.
Even the windjammers, if you had a shipping company that came in, you'd have to provide some space on the waterfront, like, this could go on forever, because there's so many different nuances. I don't know all those rules, I just know they exist, because I've been through these meetings just a few times.
Yep.
Personally, not speaking for everybody here, I would much rather get into some type of feeling that it's not like the town against any one particular type of business, and I would rather, like, find out some way that it'd be better to, like, try to work together, because some of these other things, like, may be possible, you know, to remediate, you know, the rules, why, I mean, at one point, I remember sitting with the harbor committee, and we were actually talking about building a waiting area that could keep people outside of the rain, to make a space that was smaller, to open more space in the boardwalk.
Sure.
Right.
You know, and then, that got thrown away, but I've done this so many times, I'd just like to not keep doing this. I don't know why I'm doing, I saw Survivor the other night, like, 36-year of Survivor with my daughter, I was like, this show's still on TV? I don't watch a lot of TV, but, but I was like, I kind of felt like that a little bit, it's like, it's the same scenario going on over and over and over again.
Well, you got it, you just, you feel it, I can see how that could go.
Yeah, maybe you should, maybe we should tell that to the federal Congress, too.
Yeah, I was looking for one of those immunity idols outside on the way in, just thinking it might get me out of all this, but...
Thank you, I'd like to give it a chance for Jeff and...
One other thing I want to put in there is, also, you know, there was a long-term discussion about paid parking, and a long time ago, I fought that pretty heavily.
Oh, yeah.
Well, the reasons I thought it were nothing to do with what's currently going today, because time has changed, you know, like, people really didn't park their cars down their own businesses down there, there weren't as many businesses down there that were at the time, so things have changed a lot in 22 years. But, there are so many employees of hotels, restaurants, and shops that are just like shifting their cars all the way around there, I kind of feel like maybe one of the things I would suggest, even though I can't believe I'm suggesting it, especially on TV after fighting it so vehemently 20 years ago, is that maybe you do that, on the public landing, because then you might take this parking problem away, if you're talking about 25 out of 100 spaces. I wonder how many other spaces that are being currently, I do kind of know, but I'm not saying...
Well, we actually know now, too.
We know now, too, we, yeah.
That's what the parking study is involved in, exactly that. This is not a single-prong approach for the businesses on Main Street, or the voting public, or...
Oh, your, your thing is...
Oh, that's why, that's why I can't hear myself. I was just saying, this is not about, Audra, this week, we have a parking study going in parallel to attack exactly what you're talking about, it is a big part of the problem, it's a multi-prong approach, and we're just trying to go across the board, we haven't hit them all yet, as you also pointed out, and that's just part of the process, so, please don't feel singled out, I mean, I know you've, this has been discussed, but I wonder if it's ever been discussed in the, in the context of looking at the entire issue, which you made a lot of good points on, that's what we're trying to do, it's a little bit different in my mind, I could be wrong, Aaron, but in my mind, it's a little bit different, as we're trying to look at it holistically.
Yeah, I don't, you know, I've gone through that process twice now with the redevelopment, like, and been on the board with that one time of the...
Right.
Public landing, so in a broader sense, I feel like it's been addressed a few times, but I would think it would be possible, or at least what I'm suggesting, is that maybe in the future, we can be looked at as a resource, because we're there all the time.
Mm-hmm.
And maybe we could work together versus feeling like, like the word "target" just made the skin crawl on my mouth.
Of course, of course.
Because I was...
Was a response to what, an allegation, I am, that was...
Just choice of words.
Yeah, I didn't...
But, but you know what I mean, like...
Not targeting, that's just because somebody said to me, "You're targeting us, you're targeting us, you're targeting..."
No, no.
Made you feel the same way.
Oh, it made you feel, yeah.
I'm gonna...
Slide off.
Any other questions?
Jeff, you had your hand up.
But Aaron, before you step down, hi.
Nice to you, I'm Matt, we haven't met before.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you. But you had mentioned previously that you had a handful of suggestions that would assist you in lieu of these parking spaces. I'm not aware of them, and maybe, again, through email at this point, this could be something to, I know you don't want to do it, but we could bring this back around to see what those suggestions were in the past.
Yeah, I would, I would love to more have a conversation than, you know, like, feel like I've got a rundown here on a Tuesday night and ditch my kids to, yeah, anytime is what I'm trying to say. I mean...
And so what is the common email that's, that gets sent to all of us? It's...
E O C, Select Board.
Oh, there's actually a couple of them, the Select Board distribution also.
I can just give you my phone number, I'm really easy to approach.
But again, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Love to hear, but, you know, again, for those of us who might be new to this, it sounds like you have some ideas that might work in lieu of these designated spots.
And it might, some of them might work for some people and some, not some others, and...
Thank you.
Thank you, Aaron, by the way, Aaron, if we're discussing this in 20 years, you'll still be here and I won't be.
I'll look just the same.
Please, please. Go ahead, Allison.
Hi, I'll be quick, my name is Jeff Beck, I've got the day sail permit for the Sloop Heritage, I've been there for five years, I appreciate, I appreciate the argument that we need to open up parking spaces in the town of Camden, obviously, parking is the big recurring issue. I just wanted to, yeah, I, I don't feel necessarily targeted, I do feel as if, I do feel as if, I just wanted to state my case about why, you know, if our day sail permit, parking permits were either revoked, which apparently is not on the discussion, but moved them to a specific lot or whatever, why that, how that affects the daily operations for the day sailors down there. For myself, I can, I can, I can speak for, well, I'll speak for myself, but I've witnessed it with others, you know, we, we bring our booth, our sales, our table, our, our chair, and our umbrella, and our signage down, and we set ourselves up for the day. So that would mean, I'm just saying, logistically, you're driving everything down, you're hopping out of the car, you're putting, you're setting everything up, and then we're driving up to the Washington Street, or we're driving up here, and then we're making the trek back down. It would, it's just, it's going to add a pretty large inconvenience to the day. I understand also the concept that, you know, we, we don't need to be feeling like we're getting special privilege either, so I understand that, but I do second the, the argument about, there are times when quick storms roll in over the top of the Camden Hills, and people are sitting down there in the rain, waiting for their boat to arrive, because they need to be able to catch the lines for the boat that's coming in, and it's nice for the, for the boat that's coming in to have that person on the dock, but if they've had to run off to the Washington, up Washington Street to hide out, or go hide out at the bar at Peter Otz or something like that, you know, that's kind of a, that's not, that's not a realistic...
The bathrooms are open now, we've got the cover...
Oh, that's true, I guess that's true, that's, thank you for that. I think, no, I think it's, I think it's a wonderful thing that the bathrooms are open there all the time. Anyway, I just wanted to reiterate, or I just want to make my argument known, I appreciate the discussion, I'd love to be able to keep that parking permit, obviously, where it is, as it is, if it happens not to be that, if the dice don't fall that way, that's fine, you know, I just wanted to say my piece, and I thank you for hearing me out.
You did, thank you.
Good to see you again.
Good to see you again, as well.
You have a question for him?
I don't necessarily have a question, I think, you know, so I'm, I'm new to the parking study, I'm new to the harbor committee, so I sit at the ideal position to, to meet with you and, and talk...
New eyes.
Yeah, but, so, for me, the idea is really to work with all of you to find solutions, we're not trying to move you away for just because we don't think that it's a good idea or we want to nick privileges. I think businesses are important to the vitality of Camden, but so are tourists coming in the summer and bringing us those precious little dollars, you know? So, we're all trying to find a way, so, I think, I would like all of us to look at this, like, this is the beginning of conversations about how we're going to be using parking in Camden, how we're going to be using the town landing, so that everybody finds, you know, some benefit, and, and, you know, it's not, for me, it's not a zero-sum game, I'm not taking something away from you to give it to someone else, or, just because I think it's the right thing to do. So I really want to have a collaboration mindset, and it means that we're going to have to take, we're going to have to give, but everybody's going to have to take and give, so, if we can work like in this way, that would be awesome.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Captain.
Yeah, thanks.
Wait, Audra, I'm, Audra, Allison, it's the other A.
That's okay.
Sorry.
I mean, like, just to, you know, thinking about like how we can best get public input and take advantage of all the, the knowledge in town, the perspectives, and that's sort of the, like, central issue that we face all the time, and trying to, like, make it easier for people to contribute and, like, you know, get useful information out of people so that we can make better decisions, but do it in a way that's transparent and open to everybody, and we're sort of constantly getting input about, like, well, you know, you shouldn't be having private conversations, or you should be having these conversations, or you should, you know, some, I agree with you that this sort of Select Board meeting agenda situation, where you have to wait for this whole long agenda, just to be able to give one comment about something, and it's like, that's the only opportunity, feels like, it's just, it's definitely not the most productive way to do things, I think a lot of us feel that frustration, that this just doesn't work for a lot of people. Finding the time to, and the staffing to, like, go out and all the time, you know, seek out information at the right times from everybody is, is also really hard, just because it's just like a time thing, but I think, you know, reaching out to, to us is a good thing, too, and it's not, I, I definitely can see how it feels to somebody to be like, oh, great, look, this is on the agenda, and now we have to come down and talk about it like this, which, in like this limited time period, doesn't really lead to the best results, but the idea of, you know, storage down there, I think is where a lot of this is coming from, too, that for years, people have been told we can't do certain things, like, you can't have kayak racks down there, or there's no space for lockers, or there's no space for another small building, or, because of this, like, precious parking thing, but it's because we haven't been able, we actually all have a lot of the same goals, and if we could just say, all right, can everybody give up a little bit of this parking so that we can collectively have, you know, maybe a locker unit or something, I think a lot of people could benefit from that. I personally only drive my car down there most of the time, because I want to be able to have my nets and my camera equipment and stuff like that, so, I think that you guys So, I think that you guys are in a situation that, you know, others are as well, or maybe, I don't know if the Harbor Committee could look.
Well, I think that the, this, I think that's a good point, including the previous discussion, we understand that there are individuals who have to load trucks, you know, that kind of thing happens, and we have to work with that. Same thing with you all, if we do limit the parking, we need to work together, and, and I, I also believe that, I know this board and even the two new members have that attitude, and we tried to work hard during COVID with you all to say, you know, be aggressive, more aggressive than some of you even requested with terms of your license fees. So, we're, we're trying to be there, too. This move, if we do, if we do make any move on the permits, this is, this is just consistent with our approach, that you all brought up some very good problems which we need to solve together. Mark.
I wanted to hear, are there any more comments before I speak?
Maybe we could all share, like, instead of everybody bringing their own umbrella, could we share a covered area?
There you go.
Like, just the town, you know, a lot of people could benefit from a covered area right there, I don't.
Dominic.
Hi, Dominic Joya, I've got the Motte Russell Livey lady, the permit for it. The biggest, I mean, the rest is, you know, it's a big convenience. We could survive, yes, without a parking permit, it's not a big thing. Our biggest thing is that we run, not just the, we, we run in the rain.
Yeah.
If it's raining out, we're down there. My ticket seller, I actually break the rules in our rainy days, I give them my pass, and I go park someplace else. And my ticket seller is, because we don't, we're not selling to people on the streets, but she is there answering the phone with the iPad and checking in people that are coming and going. And so I'm just, when, I already kind of know that you guys are gonna take our permits away, but can you please kind of come up with some sort of conclude, you know, some sort of idea to keep.
Sure.
Someone out of the rain? Have the, have the discussion of that, would be great.
We can work on it together.
That'd be perfect.
All right.
I, I'm super happy about this input, because I'm not aware of it, so I apologize for not being aware of it, but to me, it seems really important to protect people in the rain, light storm, whatever, I think we can find a compromise.
Does anybody else want to talk before I go? Mark, go ahead.
I'd like to say shout out to the rain down there, too. That sounds great.
Yeah, me too.
I feel, I think differently than a lot of the members of the board. I think they should keep their spots in the landing, and my reasons are, I think that it's a unique business. When I first came to town in early, I think in 1981, I think, one of the first things we did on vacation was go on, Josh will remember, the Milky Way, which is one of the first boats. It's a very special part of this town that is, is, I think, unique to have this many day sailors here. I think they have a unique business. I think they're entitled to special consideration because they have unique, unique situations that they just went through. And I also, one thing that Aaron just reminded us of, they pay rent, and nobody else does. And I think that's, that's important, and it's interesting, because Aaron, you know, talked about being against paid parking many years ago, and it came up once before, and I've had that pretty much, I feel the same way. I don't really want to see Camden turn into a paid parking place. We've had that discussion quietly, and that's gonna come up. But hearing his comment about that, I might support that, because it would solve a lot of the parking problems without having to take away their special permits, which I think, I think they deserve, especially because they pay rent, nobody else does. Very much in favor of them keeping, keeping the permit. And, you know, he's opened my eyes to maybe supporting paid parking, which I'm pretty much against at this point.
Yeah, thank you, Mark. At the end of the day, yeah, go ahead.
I would, I would just go the other direction, Mark, in the sense that, you know, the fact that you do pay this rental fee, and it's a sizable amount, that that would be applied towards, as Sophie was mentioning, some kind of constructed, again, towards the construction and maintenance of some kind of.
Protection.
Protection. Yeah, some kind of, again, I call it a boot room in our house, but again, there's gonna be some kind of situation, mudroom, and it's something that I think is a really good compromise, again, in keeping with the idea that these folks pay a sizable rent, that there's a return for that investment in the town.
The one, the one comment I'll make about that, that might make sense more in the future, but when we're looking at, in terms of building something new on the harbor before we dealt with reworking the harbor because of global warming, it, it would take a long time to get that done.
Possibly.
Because there's a lot of work to do before we could get to that point.
There can be temporary facilities, constructed very easily, and in fact, they can buy them tomorrow, and they can be put up in a day, temporary tenting, but that's not, but I agree with the point.
Harbors and Shack.
I agree with, yeah, Harbors and Shack, extension of it. Bottom line is, we're looking at either doing nothing, leaving it as it is, or the option of qualifying the permits to, current permits to a specific lot, specifically Knox. And by the way, that limitation, I believe, Audra, should be, is it, isn't it a time specific, like July, August, eight to five? Isn't that what those limitations are, or were, for the permits?
I'm trying to think.
I think it's July, September, eight to five.
So, the, not the fisherman was.
They just get a per, they just get a permit, and that's.
Sorry, I was.
Those fishermen spots are timers, are a certain.
Yes.
It's eight to, or six to four, or.
Okay, I just wanted, because this is really about the peak time of the year we're talking about. Today, I could go down to the landing and park in the middle of the day, it's not much of a big deal.
Speaking of which, we placed our, I'm not, our, all our town floats are in, like, they're blocking the view of the harbor, and they're.
I know, I know.
Oh.
I know, I saw that.
Looking at the harbor.
I saw that, but back to a board action or not?
Yeah, I, I would, I would motion to have the permits moved to a specific location in Knox Mill.
Limited to Knox Mill, okay.
Yeah.
There a second?
I just am wondering if that's, I mean, that all of them, if they want, they can't park on, like, Chestnut Street, or are we gonna be telling them, you have to park here, it just is an odd thing because it doesn't require a permit to park there?
You don't need a parking permit to park on Chestnut Street.
You don't need a parking permit to park in the Knox Mill either.
Yeah, correct, that's, I understand that, but we're limiting the parking permit to use in a specific lot, and they can park anyplace else that doesn't require a parking permit.
It's a semantics thing, though, it's just as odd.
It is, it is.
They don't need, we're giving something that, giving them something that is not.
Again, do I have a second?
Oh, I thought you already got one.
I did.
I motioned.
Second or not?
Oh, does it have to be me? I don't like, I don't love the word, but, um.
Okay. Yeah, yes, yes. Okay, motion, maiden second, further discussion?
Yes. I, I've sat out against it, and now I just bounce out of my head. I think, and one of the reasons I'm against it, is I think we're rushing to make changes to the nature of this town, that we're, we're moving into the future a little quicker than maybe we need to. And I'm against that.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Motion second, all those in favor? Against, four to one. Thank you, guys, we're gonna work with you, trust us, that's their attitude, we're gonna do it, and not the least of which is weather protection, the other things you've mentioned. This is not the final step, it's just one step in the, in the chess game with regard to parking, especially at the landing, so please take it as such, and to all those who didn't get here tonight, captains, I hope that message comes across clearly.
Can I ask a quick thing about the, about the parking study, too?
Yeah, sure.
Is there, I didn't see anything on here, since we're generating so many comments about parking, I'd like to try to capture those. Are we still in the phase where somebody could call and talk to, what's the consultant's name?
John Burke.
John Burke. Or to me.
Or to me.
Or to Audra.
Yeah, I mean, everything.
We're very happy to.
Everything that anyone says to us gets to John, and he compiles it in a report of all the comments he's received.
And so are the basics of what's been found so far in, on the website, and?
So, I, the only thing that isn't there is the information from the last.
Meeting.
Meeting of the advisory group.
Okay.
So, and that's just because I haven't gotten around to putting it on there, but within the next day or so.
Which of these things would be, like, on here, would be the best thing for somebody just to get a basic introduction to what we're studying, why we're doing it, and, you know, how they.
Probably the scope of.
The scope of work.
Scope of work.
And actually, and the first report that he gave on the, on a few findings on utilization of some of the parking spots, some data that really shows that we're at overcapacity
Forward you a.
In some downtown areas.
An email now, because it has a lot of interesting maps?
And the maps, yeah, the brand-new maps with.
But this is all.
Also, there's, um.
Those will be on the website.
It's just, like, I have a lot of people that say, like, interesting things that, you know, just to make it easy for them to be able to sort of capture that.
Right.
We need like a webcam or something outside that he wouldn't.
So, if, if you get the email, Allison, there's a duration of stay survey, and it's basically everything that Aaron was just talking about, and it was further sort of quantified through John, who said, your numbers are higher than I've ever seen in any other community in terms of, and this is like the, the shuffling, or people staying in the two-hour spots on the landing longer than they should.
Right.
And Scott and Whistle verified that, yeah, that's all people who work in town that are doing that. And then, for the people who stay for four hours or more, it's exponentially higher than it should ever be. It should be more like 0%, and we have like a 10% offender rate, so anyway.
If you've ever been to Carmel, California, if you're in a parking spot for two hours and one minute, you got a very expensive ticket. That's not the case in Camden, and it never will be, frankly.
That's the other thing.
Yeah, and I mean, and our tickets are also, like, most towns of our size and makeup, a parking ticket would be like 30 to 50 bucks, and it's 10 here.
Yeah, I remember paying $100 in San Francisco, but, yeah, here it's 10. So, and that's, you know, here and there, but I think this.
Not on the agenda at some point?
Sure, sure.
That's not on our fee schedule, it's buried in the parking ordinance, right, or the traffic code?
Traffic code, new code. Yes, absolutely can be.
How about here's us? No, no, that's us.
Is it us?
If he had the power to.
Oh, yeah, we have, we have power to change traffic.
One of the very few powers that we do have, actually.
I'll make a note of that, to raise the traffic tickets to $100.
No, 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 no.
No, I'm just kidding, we would never do that. Anyway, thanks for coming, thanks for the good information, we look forward to the next steps together. With that, I want to move on to, and I want to flip again, to approval of roles responsibilities for the Harbor Committee. Sophie is liaison, do you want to lead that one?
I guess I better stop with me and the parking section.
That's okay.
My town emails busy scanning for items.
That's okay.
You want me to?
Well, you'd like to, otherwise, you know.
So, we're, we're reconvening the Harbor Committee, and I see that my, that Josh is here as well. So, the idea is gonna be to task the Harbor Committee with three discrete tasks for the foreseeable future, just to start with. The first one being looking at the fees, which is a traditional task of the Harbor Committee. The second one is going to be looking at steamboat landing, because there's a need to, work, a lot of work that needs to be done there, so we're gonna be examining that. And the third one will be looking at Sherman's Cove, because we have some issues there with floats.
The piers.
The piers, yeah. So, these are the three things the Harbor Committee is gonna be working on between now and March.
Right.
Josh has already been super proactive by convening a meeting of the Harbor Committee for the 23rd of November, and I'm, thank you so much, Josh.
Next week? And I, and I believe, this is not intended to be limiting, it's just that, one of the things I know, we discussed with Josh and definitely the Harbor Committee, was we want to have schedules for these various items, you know, input, of course, and not going to dictate, because there are some items we don't have in limited time to approach and attack, and those are just the ones that have been recommended for the board's edification. So, because any tasks, we want to go through the board, and this is, this is one of our required committees. We have lots of committees and boards and commissions operating, one I'll discuss tonight later, but Harbor, Conservation Commission required, Personnel Committee by charter. We have boards, Public Planning Board, Zoning Board.
Cemetery Association.
Cemetery Association. You know, McCosaw Ways, but we also have Pathways, which is a two-town committee. We have, a lot of these things are operating, this is not a, we haven't slammed the door and everything, Investment Committees and Trust Committees, which are required also by Trust, yes. Then, of course, the Task Group, which is the mid-coast internet science corporation. Yeah, that's okay, keep them coming. But anyway, but, but we needed to, there's some very important items here, I think steamboat in particular, and also the issue of the confusion we ran into this year with regard to a float.
A float.
Occurred in Sherman's Cove. The documentation just needs a little kick in the butt.
Yep.
That's, that's really what that's at, so, any comments?
And I think one, one of the things that Josh and I are really looking forward is to be data-driven and document-driven, and, you know, we need to have trails and make sure that, that what we do and propose is.
Yep.
Use a.
Right.
Data and sound judgments and logic, and try to.
Define scope, schedule.
Exactly, so that's why we chose those three tasks that are discrete ones, that, that we feel that we can achieve within a reasonable amount of time.
And two of those three, two of those three are kind of meaty, I don't, fee schedule, yeah, but the other two are very meaty, I think you'll all agree. So, that was the purpose of this item for the board, to understand that this has been recommended as a scope, initial scope, with many responsibilities we could put on Harbor Committee, but we need to get it going. Okay?
Now, what about membership? Is there, we're hoping to deal with those?
I think that's something we're gonna look at later.
We have two applications, potential third coming, so I would hope we would address this on December 7th.
Yep.
Okay.
Makes sense?
So, we're still taking applications?
Yeah, we are. By the way, to that point, good point, Allison, I think a lot of committee individuals need to understand that, and have been requested to approve existing members of other committees, and we, we really want to advertise, at least verbally and otherwise, for anybody who's interested in, in being involved in one of these committees that are operating, especially right now, or, it, it has to be a process we stick to and not vacillate on it, making an exaggeration is not a rubber stamp. That's all. No aspersions on any individual, God, this town is so lucky to have so many people who are, so love this town that they want to contribute to it, that's understood, but there's an overriding issue of load and workload, and there's no shortage of good ideas in this town, thank God, but, but there's, there's a shortage of ability to implement in a timely fashion by the current size of our, our staff and our, and our.
We also need a few more people to do some of the mandatory.
Yes.
We struggle with just a quorum.
Yes.
We struggle with turnover on the planning board, some of our committees that are really, have teeth and have a role.
They do.
That is not just advisory, and it's kind of embarrassing when we can't get a quorum at the ZBAY.
Well, they're quasi-judiciary committees.
Exactly. Exactly.
They're like the bread and butter municipal function and why you'd have, you know, a group of citizens convene for... And the fact that we can't...
People that are knowledgeable and willing to put in the time on those, because we can't have 25 advisory committees and not get a quorum for the ZBA. It's just, it's embarrassing and it's...
I agree, I agree. But with that, I...
Josh is here?
Josh, did you want to say anything? You're always welcome, but...
Oh, I forgot to mention, we're going to have the committees in French.
Okay, excellent.
Oh, okay, I won't be there. If not, Josh, to your point, Allison, it's a great segue. And thank you, Steve, for all your attention. And you're cool here, too. But I wanted to go to one of the, you mentioned, Allison, about required. And that is just an update, if it were, maybe not in action, that's up to you. But in terms of the Conservation Commission, do you want to give us a little bit on that and where it's heading?
Hold this up. So let's see if we talk for a second.
I'm sorry, Sophie.
I'm confused by just the point of procedure, Bob. This approval of role and responsibility for the task of the Harbor Committee. Do we...
That was a request of the Select Board from Audra to say, "Give us the summary of the responsibilities." This is her following through with her task. So for the edification of the Select Board members. So that exists, you have it. Any comments, because we can discuss it. But you know what? You really can't change very much, because this is pretty much dictated by ordinance.
No. In some ways, it is like, we're supposed, these are some of the things that are, we're directing them to do, not all the things that are dictated by ordinance. So I think it...
Audra, where...
I was just, because they're listed in the action items and there's an approval, I'm just asking, is there a further step?
It's a good question. Audra, where do these actions come from?
So...
Responsibilities come from?
Like, the fee, approving the fee schedule, that's like Sophie was saying, traditional Harbor Committee responsibility. It's in the Harbor Ordinance. But the other two have come out of recent Select Board discussions about, you know, issues that you would like the Harbor Committee to investigate more and come back with a recommendation on.
So they're not required?
I mean, I wouldn't, I'd say that it's very appropriate, given some of the more vague responsibilities that are described in the Harbor Ordinance, for them to be involved in it.
Well, I think it's issues for discussion. We could talk about it for quite a bit. But I think the Board should take a look at any of these and bring them forward to a discussion about which ones may not be applicable, if there is any of those. But right now, the Harbor Committee is tasked with three elements to approach. And I think we can keep cherry picking from that list as we see. And/or feedback from the Committee about anything they think that is badly amiss. I mean, through the liaison.
I just want to say, I thought it was an excellent recommendation. And I might mention, anybody watching, it is available on the town website in the Select Board packet, so that you can see it, if anybody's interested in the specifics of what we're talking about. And people should look at it and be aware of it. But I thought it was a great wrap-up as we re-enter active committee participation again.
Allison, Conservation Commission.
Actually, before we go on, a point of order. Do we want to establish a precedent that if we're going to assign tasks, for instance, Sherman's Cove, Steamboat Landing, X, Y, and Z, that those are motions that we want to address?
If the Board, it's a good idea. It's a good idea, I think, to make it formalize it and so that there's no question. And that sets a precedent for a point of order, as you suggest, that says that's what we're going to do for all other committees and whatever entities we have to adjudicate on their responsibilities. So with that, Matt, want to make a motion?
I would make a motion that, again, we're going, as per the agenda, approval of roles, responsibilities, recommendations, tasks for the Harbor Committee should be as defined. Discrete tasks are predetermined already by the ordinance, the fee structure, and new issues being the Steamboat Landing review, what we call the review, Steamboat Landing Review and Sherman's Cove Review.
I second.
Discussion. Are you all in favor? I see five hands, 5-0. Thank you very much. Good point, Matt, thank you.
Thank you.
I feel lash marks on my back. Good one. But now, Allison, would you like to discuss where we are in terms of the, you had discussed last time about some of the issues of...
I said I was going to send the document, then I didn't.
Yeah, no, you didn't, but maybe you could just...
We're not ready for, like, a formal vote, but I just wanted to update everybody. And I will send this out now. I took, this document here is basically all the references that I could find anywhere to the Conservation Commission and the Comprehensive Plan. And then also looking for what is in Maine State statute. And then we actually have a Conservation Commission ordinance. The Conservation Commission references in the town charter are very sparse, basically just saying that we'll have one. The ordinance gets into some details about the number of members and staggered terms. And then Maine State statute actually gives the ability for us to give the Conservation Commission some, thank you. You don't want to hear about the Conservation Commission, Erin? Come on, you'd be great.
And that's really the truth, actually.
All right, I won't give up on you then. You can watch later. So there is a lot to Conservation Commissions. We can give them the ability to do all kinds of things. But the core functions, as they are referenced in our Comprehensive Plan, are, you know, the overseeing of town-owned natural resources. And that can be defined in a variety of ways. They help the Planning Board, they advise the Planning Board on zoning amendments that might impact natural resources, overlay zones, things like that. And sort of most importantly is the idea of maintaining an inventory of sort of natural resources within town boundaries. So, you know, wetlands and, you know, significant watersheds, water quality. There's really no end to it. But our Comprehensive Plan already does identify, you know, a bunch of really important things that I think haven't been sort of well incorporated into some of the things that we do. And it makes pretty specific recommendations. One of those things are just, you know, a few of the things that the state database already has, like exemplary, you know, northern hardwoods forests. And they have that, the state has that mapped out. One of the things that the Conservation Commission, hopefully, will have a few people that can map out this stuff and make sure that gets into the town database so that every time we go on the property maps to do, you know, different, looking at different projects or whatever, you can chuck off a layer that says, shows all of these areas that have already been identified in state databases as significant. So that's, there's a lot of that kind of stuff. And I've started to talk with one of the people who's agreed to serve on the Conservation Commission is Brian Robinson, who is currently, he's been a longtime member of many town committees, but the Parks and Rec Committee. And one of the things that state statute gets into is that there's a lot of, in some places, the Parks and Rec Committee and the Conservation Commission are actually the same thing. We've separated that in the past, but for us, a lot of our conservation areas, our natural resources, actually are also town parks. And so being able to sort of look over that, develop a database of all of these natural resource areas and a plan for, you know, identifying priorities with them would be one of the things that we would start with. And then what we've already heard quite a bit about is the Camden Community Forest here. The, which, and not street trees. So that ties into this stuff with, you know, like Keith Blizzard and Nancy Callow Johnson. And there's a lot of work that's gone into this over the years. And so one of the key things in the Comprehensive Plan references that really the Conservation Commission is sort of that guardian body that would be maintaining a town tree inventory. We have, we have some that are not digitally done from 1996 that are just basically need to be updated and modernized. And so, so that would be one of the key things that we would start with, sort of dividing into maybe a few subcommittees.
So you're, great, great, great. But you're going to send this all...
We'll send this...
In advance?
Yep.
And then any comments about approach toward populating the Conservation Commission? You've mentioned Brian, but because we obviously collectively want to get it going.
Yeah, so I think there are already people that are interested and active in sort of different areas that are not under the Conservation Commission right now. See, the idea would be to bring that in and coordinate the activities. That doesn't mean that every single person necessarily that wants to volunteer to map out all the street trees needs to be on the Conservation Commission.
I see, I see, of course.
That was one of the things that we talked about a lot. Like, how can we make this work so that people that want to, you know, really devote most of their time to a specific project can do that without being forced to do everything? And sort of, you know, developing a framework for that. But if there's a, so I think the next step would be to make the tree people, tree, the people that have been expressing the most interest in trees.
The tree wardens. Oh, no, we have a tree warden.
Yeah, right, you know, I'm not, the words are escaping me. But to say that, you know, so it would be the, it would be the, and I consider myself one, so it's not a negative term at all. Hopefully, we're all tree people. But that if the, you know, the Select Board would support the idea of doing that, of bringing that under the Conservation Commission.
Well, like, to me, it's like, excuse me one second, Mark, but it's like we do with this committee. Formulating a commission and giving its initial charge are both activities we need to pursue. So we're, you seem to be leading the charge on what those initial charges should be for the Conservation Commission. So I think...
We want to start small and then build out.
Again, you...
There were the tree inventory and, you know, updating some of the wetland inventories.
I think any of those things, let's bring those, this is going out. Let's bring those forward for discussion, perhaps even the next meeting. And, but also update on, because without a commission, we don't have a commission either. We really need to get that going.
Right. I don't think we need to necessarily appoint every single person right away.
Exactly, exactly.
So I think we should start it with a smaller group.
Exactly.
And then have that group sort of help to identify, okay, what do we need? People can, you know, come to a few meetings. And it's not, we don't want to get into a situation where everybody's like, "Okay, Conservation Commission, that sounds good." And then they're on it and it's like, oh, this isn't really the thing.
You're saying, what's a commission, usually seven people?
Seven, by ordinance, yeah.
By ordinance, you don't...
On 15, yeah.
Well, it's on everything. They have, not just Camden, but just... Anyway, thank you very much for that.
Do you have all the pictures you need? Because a lot of people took...
Send them through.
If there are pictures that...
Send them through.
Send them in, send them in.
Send them through to us, yes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And there's, as part of, one of the things that Parker Gasset has been helping town staff do is this, like, flood resiliency checklist. And as part of that, he's been compiling photos of all types of flood events throughout history. And it was really good to see that lots of town staff, they were like, "Oh, here's our picture from 2009. Here's our pictures from here." So if people sending pictures were even, is it possible to, like, is there still an opportunity to report damage? Like, what's the best way for somebody to say, like, "There's damage here and I think, you know, it's because of the storm," or...
So just send it through to my office, so either myself or Janice. And we can make sure that everybody's aware of it. And another thing, and I'm glad you brought up the flood resiliency checklist, because that's a project that we were working on with Maine Sea Grant. And it's something that they're trying to do with communities across Maine.
Right.
I think it would be really beneficial, because they've given that presentation to town staff about, you know, what we need to do to go through that process. But I think that having Parker and Esperanza come to the Select Board, so there can be sort of a public explanation of the program, the process, what it's going to do for us and how it's going to work would be really beneficial.
Absolutely.
Agreed.
Good.
That would be great.
Came previously to the Planning Board, it was terrific.
Yeah.
And they have, they were also at a workshop, as you know, recently, but...
Yep.
Cool. With that, by the way, the other discussion that we've kind of already discussed about committee, boards, and commissions, I wanted to make two points. When we were enrolling this out, we still remain with about maybe a half dozen or so committees that we, the Board really needs to deal with. And that needs to come in the near term. Where obviously, we've been attacking the ones that are required. But as I listed, there are boards and commissions and committees that have been and are operating and have been for quite a while, like Planning Board and Zoning Board of Appeals, et cetera. We're trying to reinforce Conservation Commission. I made the list before, but we have about, we need to address those and probably the next meeting or two, worst case. And also, just want to remind everybody again that we're always looking for individuals who are interested in various modes of interest in town itself. This doesn't have to be limited to a committee, because there's always a potential task groups. We want to tap on individuals, as we did with MIDC, the Midcoast Internet Development Corporation. That was the approach we took there, individuals who had a lot of expertise in that area to attack certain elements on our priorities list. Allison, you ever come in?
Just that, and it was, it's always a useful exercise when I go through the Comprehensive Plan. And even though I've read it, when I go through it again, looking for specific things, I oftentimes find stuff that jumps out at me in a new way, because I'm more knowledgeable. And so I think it would be really helpful if we could kind of get town committee members to commit to reading the Comprehensive Plan. I mean, the amount of work that went into this document is pretty incredible. And there are shortcomings here and there and things that we could add. But overall, there's just a lot of really, really good stuff in it. And for people to have a, in order to really contribute on a committee, it's, you know, it's most helpful if you have a really much broader understanding of sort of all of the things that the town is working on. And I just think we should be more disciplined with ourselves and with, you know, committees that we say, okay, this is, like, this is an important document and we want you to be familiar with it. And every so often, we should probably be having a discussion about it ourselves that's just more...
I agree.
Because it's really pretty darn good.
And it's a document that took a lot to develop. The documents have been approved by the electorate. And it's just not something we should be sticking on a shelf, exaggerating a bit, of course. But that's what tends, has a tendency to happen in these situations. And I...
Town staff are, like, I know that Audra pulls it out all the time and Jeremy, and that they're looking at it, but I feel like we don't do that enough.
Well, I mean, I think that, you know, we're all trying to sort of pick away at what we can and be opportunistic about implementing things. But I think that a more sort of organized and concerted effort can be brought to try and implement it, especially, you know, in light of trying to bring back committees and give them tasks that are really moving everyone towards the broader goals that the town has adopted.
Right. Agreed. With that, and reports, Audra, do you want to lead as town manager?
Um, you know, I...
That's what she does.
Well, we're not doing her review here. We're just asking if she wants to report.
Do you want to lead as our lead person?
No. Obviously does not.
No, it's work. Do you have anything or not?
I, I mean, aside from all the storm updates and everything there...
Thank you very much. Select Board...
I have a quick question. Have we, just to make sure that things don't go too long, have we gotten any updates? Did we reach out to Lincolnville? What's going on with the...
Thank you for reminding me about that. So I sent an email the day after the meeting with the suggested dates and times that the, or dates and offer that, you know, all of you would travel to Lincolnville and it could coincide with their next meeting. And I haven't heard back from them yet, so I'll follow up again.
No, I'm glad you brought that up.
That was December 14th.
Well, yeah, but you know, it's been so long now. I have a problem with that date.
Oh, okay.
So, well...
Well, you had to move on with your life.
Well, I had, I'm sorry, you had to make commitments. And I'm a little disappointed they didn't get back to us, because it was honestly their priority in the first place, as I agree with it.
Well, I think it's ours, it's a shared priority.
All right, fine. But I...
I'm excited about it.
Yeah, December 14th. What dates did we pick? I remember the 14th, what was the other one?
We picked the one to start.
I think we picked a couple, I mean, try to...
But I can't find it, Audra.
I'll, just give me a moment and I can find the...
You picked the 14th?
Thank you. That was very recent.
We said December 13th.
Yeah.
And that could be prior to their Select Board meeting. We said December 14th, anytime between 11:00 and 5:00 p.m. December 16th, anytime between 10:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, I only have, I only have the 16th.
What, what's that?
I only, it's the 14th, I'm gone.
Okay, so, so 16th is better. I mean.
So 16th between 10 and 2 is our window right now. Okay.
Yep.
I'm blocked.
Sorry about that.
No, no, it's fine.
Remove the 16.
Between 10 and 2.
We had, I had 10, 16 from 2 to, 10 to 2.
Yes. About 10 o'clock would be good.
Okay.
What, what? No, 10 o'clock, did you say?
Between 10 and 2.
That's not going to work for.
That's what we picked.
No, remember, there's a member of the Lincolnville Select Board, at least one that we know that won't work for.
Let them come across on a date later than, I don't know what else to do. We picked those two days. If that's a problem, I understand that. We can certainly accommodate another day.
Yeah.
Because there could be a problem with one individual who.
So maybe what I can say is.
Solid waste time since we're going to cancel that.
That's right. That's tomorrow night.
Just kidding.
So yeah, maybe what I can say to them is the 16th is the only date still available to everyone. But if they want to propose dates further into the future.
Fine.
Let us know.
Yeah, we'll go to them.
Yep.
Okay, cool.
Talk about a waste of staff time and certainly, I feel for you to have to communicate this and then we all come back in our meeting. It's almost like someone should just pick up the phone and call each other and.
It's called doodledoodle.com.
Doodle.com.
Doodle.com. I can't wait to get one from Audra. It's going to be very exciting.
We don't, maybe you.
I've done lots of doodles and had lots of doodle revolutions.
Right, exactly.
Thank you, Audra.
Just to confirm though, that the 13th, 14th are gone.
Apologize to Lincolnville for me, but I can't hold these dates open forever.
That's okay, understandable.
In any way, to select board reports, Sophie.
Can we, while we're talking about dates, the December 9th is still active though for the.
Workshop.
Okay, just want to make sure.
The tannery.
It is. Okay.
The 9th, 9th.
9th.
Yep.
9th at 1:00 p.m.
9th at 1:00 p.m. Again, as long as we're going through this, Bob.
I wrote that down at the time.
Exactly.
Thank you because I think you.
Nobody's got that one. So we'll.
That's the workshop.
Again, so that's for our ARBC and for our CF, for the, the two elements that are in play now for the, the funding.
Yep, the ABCA and the.
Oh, yes.
Community donations plan.
Yep. 1:00 p.m.
1:00 p.m.
That works.
December 9th.
December 9th.
And it's here?
Uh, yes.
Yes.
All right. To select board reports, Sophie, do you want to start?
No, I was in Africa.
Well, that's a good start.
But it's not in Knox County.
Mr. Matt, I'm going to play huffscotch. Mr. Matt, do you have anything you'd like to report?
Sure. I'll just dovetail off of Audra and Public Works. I'd like to give a shout out that walking with Kona both on the day, I ran into Allison on that day as well. But they have been working nonstop, those guys, and.
Yeah, they're great.
Just fantastic. And they're fast and they've been responsive. So Bob, you know, email would come to me and I'd send it off to Audra and Dave Saint Laurent. And no exaggeration, hours later, not days later, they were on it and fixing it and really happy members of the community. So I just wanted to share that with the, with the team and with the select board.
They'll appreciate it. They, I mean, they all listen to stuff like this.
Well, to segue, segue to Matt, and I wasn't planning to mention it, but there was one where there was a concrete spill in front of the library. I can guess where it came from. But concrete spills, if you don't attack quickly, they're trouble.
Yeah.
Because they, you know, well, it causes discoloration. We have another one in town. They just called us for years, but they got on it within two hours. And they, they did what they could and it's very visible now. So that's to Matt's point.
Excellent. Concrete spill. Connected with a storm or just?
No, the repair.
Connected with a concrete truck.
Okay.
Well.
I don't think we want to go any further.
No, I don't think we do either.
Luckily, this meeting's winding up. Hopefully nobody's listening at this point because.
Mr. Ratner.
I'm going to take, I'm going to take my mask off so I'm really clear.
Uh-oh.
Yeah, I've got some, some notes here that I want to talk about. Number one, it's interesting because just, I don't know, 40 minutes ago, I talked about we're going too fast into the future and like to slow down. And now sort of to prove that, I look at each individual individually, here's something I don't think we're going in the future fast enough. But I want to, I'm going to start, I'm going to tell a quick story about a survey. I remember this from a New Yorker magazine article a number of years ago. A group of researchers went out and asked adult men between the ages of 25 to 44 about American foreign aid. And there's a point to all this. Statistics at the time indicated that 50% of men that age got their news from talk radio, which is often, I feel, more based on feeling than fact. The, the, the first question asked in the survey was, by the interviewer was, do you feel that the United States spends too much of its annual budget on foreign aid? The overwhelming reply was yes. The second question was, what percentage of our budget is spent on foreign aid? The number one reply was 15%. The third question was, what is a reasonable percentage that we should be spending on foreign aid? The number one reply was 5%. At that point, the questionnaires let the people that they were interviewing know that the correct answer of how much of the American budget that was spent on foreign aid was less than 1%. The point of the exercise was to point out that if surveys ask questions and get replies based on incorrect information, then the results of the survey simply can amplify that information. A person can hear someone's opinion about something and they can move their feelings one way or another. But when a legitimate survey company takes those feelings and publishes them in a survey, then often those feelings, because they're coming from a professional survey, are then believed by many to be facts. But unfortunately, those facts are based on bad information. The reason I bring this up is because there are stories from our local news organizations discussing the Montgomery Dam survey that was held recently. As I've said over and over again in these meetings, there is much to be learned about our river and dam situation. Not just about the Montgomery Dam, but the whole watershed up and down the McGuntuck River. Doing a survey before all the information is learned and understood is simply useless. It's based on incomplete information. That's why I've suggested that we need to do a major workshop, held at the Camden Opera House perhaps, where everyone who wants to attend will be able to safely, where questions will be asked for and submitted in advance and read by an impartial moderator and answered by a panel of experts so we can learn all the facts before we ask people what their opinions are. And let me add, after all the submitted questions are asked, people will be able to ask questions and respond from the audience. In saying that, I need to correct something I said at our last select board meeting. It was brought to my attention that I said at that meeting, I don't know if the Montgomery Dam causes flooding. That was a bit of shorthand on my part, trying to get to the point I was making about how important a major town workshop at the Opera House will be. What I should have said is, I don't know if the Montgomery Dam causes flooding because I'm not a scientist and my opinion doesn't count without legitimate information to back it up. That's why we need the experts to weigh in on this and have a workshop. Let me clarify. I don't know scientifically that the Montgomery Dam can cause flooding, but I believe that it does personally. One of the scientists I spoke to about the issue a while back, I remember telling me that he believed that in a large rain event, it could raise the river level by six to nine feet. This conversation was held before the large range, rain events that we've had this summer and fall. I'd like, I'd like to ask, I'd like to ask him if that is still an accurate figure based on the extraordinary rain events that have happened locally and worldwide recently, where the frequency and duration are unparalleled, and what would happen at that point. Let me remind everyone that my concern is simply mostly public safety. I'm a certified swift water rescue technician and am very knowledgeable about how dangerous, knowledgeable about how dangerous swift water is. I also want to remind everyone that the study we've undertaken is not about the Montgomery Dam. It's about the entire watershed from McGuntuck Lake, from McGuntuck Lake all the way to Camden Harbor. I have a bunch of questions I would like to ask, you know, that I've heard from other people. Cost of dam repair, maintenance, personnel to operate. What happens, the lake levels at Lake McGuntuck compared to what happens to the lake, to the river levels in town? Because there was a tie in this latest rain event that if the, the lake levels had been higher, it would have caused a problem in town because we either caused flooding at one end or the other. And that's something we need to be aware of. If the town votes to remove, what will the waterfall look like afterwards? Because there will still be a waterfall if we remove the dam. And one of the things that, that in reading the science, I try to read a lot of the science, a lot of the dams, a lot of dams around the country are being removed because they no longer serve a scientific purpose or a business purpose, which is the fact of Montgomery Dam. One of the interesting things I learned from reading about the science that, there's been discussion about, well, do we want to take up the dam out because there's sediment based up against it? And one of the things I read, which was a surprise to me, that dams, that sediment at dams at the ocean, at the, at the point of the ocean actually cause beach erosion because that sediment coming down the river is important to supporting, to shoring up the beaches. And the dam can actually cause, cause a problem, which, which was interesting to me. Anyway, those are some of the questions I've had that I would like to ask. I would like every voter in Camden to understand all the issues and make their decision on election day based on facts and feelings. Because in the end, even though I'm on the select board, I have the same single vote that every other voting citizen in Camden does. The select board will not make a final decision about the Montgomery Dam or anything else to do with the McGuntuck watershed. It will be made by the voters of Camden. My goal and my job here is to make sure they have the best information they can get before they make their decision.
Thank you, Mark.
That's my statement.
Thank you, sir. Allison.
Thanks, Mark. That was great. It's, we're going to be talking about this for a long time. And so I definitely think that there, you're right, that there are many forums that we're going to have and many venues. And some people love to just sit down and read 250 pages and knock it all out. And some people like to be able to ask questions. So just a quick weather report from me. This was not, not the October 31st storm, but this was just last weekend, which really wasn't a storm.
The windstorm.
Yeah. And so for the, since I've been kind of trying to monitor the weather more and learn about climate change and all these things, one of the things I like to do is go out and see, you know, what's happening when the wind's blowing this direction, what's happening when it's blowing that direction, what does a 10-foot high tide look like, what does a 12-foot high tide look like? And most of the time, I spend, you know, most of my time right in the harbor there. But lately, I've been trying to take a look at the yacht club more often too. And it's really, you go down there sometimes when there's, everything's calm. And it's like, why is there seaweed all over the place? And it's interesting to see just like how far it gets.
Seaweed goes.
Because this is much higher than the, the public landing and the, you know, harbor park where we see it flooded. But it's, since it's out there more, it's, it's more susceptible. And so, you know, this is during the day and it's like, huh, what's going on? And then you can see that here's a buoy and you hear Karen Luthy, the manager over there, has stories of things that she's found and how the, this, this section here, you can see is like really much more dilapidated than the rest of it. And so when I went down, this was only a 10 and a half foot high tide, so not an astronomical high tide or anything. But when the wind is blowing from the east or the southeast, I mean, God forbid that that started to happen more often in Camden because it just makes a massive difference for our harbor. And so this is, you know, waves coming over in this corner here. And this is what it looks like when it splashes down. And that, one of the things that we've been learning about in flood resilience webinars and stuff is this tendency to make the shoreline hard in order to protect. It's, you know, it has its, its benefits for certain places, but it's all, you, all of that force has to go somewhere. And so when you harden certain areas, it just increases the force in other areas. And so for, for the, for the yacht club, it's like, you know, it's found this weakest point over here. And so all of a sudden, you can get really surprised by what comes through. And, you know, just did that over and over and over again. And so if that, you know, if the wind is blowing and it's a, it's a 12-foot high tide instead, like one of the higher ends of the spectrum, and you see a lot of the time, we're just only one variable away from things just, just being so much worse. And nothing catastrophic happened to the, you know, to the yacht club that last weekend. But each, you can just see each time, the wear and tear, a few more things are moved away. And it's, it's just a battle all the time with, so when we can find places where we don't have to fight the battles, it's better because in, in some places, we know we will have to, you know, fight the battles with these hardened shorelines. Another place, this is just, this is the part of, speaking of FEMA and getting help from them, this is the part of the seawall here that has, that fell down in 2005. And yeah, right, sorry, in Harbor Park. And this area is the, you know, some of the sort of patching that we've done. This is the, like crushed stone that's been brought in to fill up the.
And then fill.
Right. Because this, the, when the, when the seawall gets overtopped, it's sucking material back out. And what's bad is if, you know, water gets, these seawalls weren't, there are some that are designed to kind of let water go through. These were designed to be grouted and to not have water on the other side. So it's damaging to it. And it has caused, you can see a little bit in 2005, what happened with all the rain. It wasn't as much, they didn't blame it as much on the, on the high tide as, as the rain. Because you can see here, this is the sluiceway that gets opened up to relieve the flooding up top. And that is just blasting this corner here. And so one of the things we had to answer with, in 2005, when FEMA helped us, they gave us $25,000 toward repairing all that. And, you know, we had to say was that, has there ever been damage before? Are there alternatives? Are there, you know, all these things? And one of the things they did is they took it from being like a right angle here to, they made it a little bit smoothed out, hoping that that would help. But anyway, that's just, you know, it was like nothing, nothing catastrophic at all last weekend, but it's just the, the continuous. Right. Of, you know, erosion and the, the grout that can't be sealed. We can't even do work here unless it can be dry for a little while. So, yeah, I have, I've been taking lots of, lots of pictures of different things. But there were a lot of places, you know, this is October 31st. There were, it's, in some places, it's not that it was just close. It's that, you know, this is the Knowlton Street Dam and this is overtopping. This is, you know, a bench that was placed here. This is not the area that's supposed to get water.
Water.
Water. And what happens is, you know, if you say, oh, what's the big deal? The water went back down. But what happens is it, it erodes the, the abutments and the stability of the structure itself. This, when logs come down through here, also it's, because the more the water is up, it allows things to float that would normally just get caught up on the sides. So then it gets, it's up here and you can see this conduit here. This is actually, this is town-owned area that's a little bit dangerous right now. It pull, it started to pull things from this bridge. But this, this is a pretty big problem. And this was without, like Mark said, without the lakes, the lake gates open. And so people were really starting to, to be upset at the lake because here, so here, at this point, the next morning, the, the gates still weren't open. And so understandably, there were, there were people on the lake saying, what the heck? Where are the, the level is coming up and the town needs to open those gates. But it was just at the point where it sort of started, stopped raining that it was, you know, knowing what was going on downtown, we already had a dam overtopping in one spot. We already had the, so this is what, what Dave Bolstridge uses a lot to gauge how much more water it's okay to send downtown. When you look at this and you, you don't feel like it's okay to open the floodgates up in the lake.
Right.
And let a bunch more water.
Right.
So that's, it's, we were lucky that time that the lake, we'd already done this drawdown where about two feet of water is brought down below the spillway. And people scream every year because they don't want the lake level to go down.
Of course.
But since we had done that, we were right in this like sweet spot.
Sweet spot.
Where they didn't have to open up the gates until the rain really had stopped. But, you know, it's, it's just like one variable.
Yeah, it is.
Away from a major event. The FEMA flood maps, the National Flood Insurance Maps don't show what's predicted if there's any kind of obstruction. For instance, like the Rossin Avenue Bridge, this is my, I promise this will be my last thing. But, but this, so this was.
Yep.
Rossin Avenue. And here is an example of, it's very common for like a log to get stuck here. And it really raises the profile. And this could happen on Main Street too, because of the way the bridge is designed. So.
To your point, to the damage that was caused in 2011 in Vermont, including covered bridges, wasn't caused by water alone. It was caused by debris.
Yeah.
Coming down like bridges that.
And just that, that bridge catches a lot of debris.
It does.
And it's going to be gone pretty soon.
It's going to be gone, yeah.
And it's going to be something that spans across the river and doesn't collect debris. So, I mean, that's got to go somewhere.
It's all part of the analysis of the entire watershed.
Right. And so some of these buildings here that are, you know, it's, it's not just, when it's in these public spaces too, it's not just about the buildings themselves and the property owners there. It's like evaluating what kind of a risk, you know, pieces of that falling off.
Right.
What kind of a risk that presents to the harbor.
Right. Thank you, Allison. Interesting information. More to follow. I just had three quick ones, two informational. One is I was pleased to find out that we've already oversold or sold beyond our budget for snowball season passes.
That's good.
Over the three, over, over the $350,000.
Excellent.
I didn't do it, but that's, you know, let's keep going. Two was the investment, the trust investment committee did meet last week with our advisor. And just FYI, the report that they provided us showed that our investment trusts only, just the investment trust, no other investments have, are now at about just over $7.1 million. And that is year on year, October 31st, 39% increase. That's against the S and P 500, which was a 43% increase. The difference for that is because we have some monies that are in fixed income and in cash. That's why we couldn't possibly hit the 43. But that's a substantial increase in the, in the trusts available.
Can you explain what you mean by investment trusts?
Yeah, all the trusts we have.
The trust funds?
Trust funds, period. Just the trust funds, no other investments.
Just the trust fund, like the ones that are used to fund general assistance and all of that?
Yes.
Plus others or just?
Oh, it's all the, what is there, seven or eight of them or nine of them?
It's a cemetery.
The list of, the list of trusts.
It includes a cemetery.
Midco solid waste.
Oh, yeah, it does. Includes all of them.
Oh, okay. So that's not.
Includes all of them.
Some of those are very restricted.
They are. We don't, we don't get to spend, it's just a report on the investments. It's just a report on the investments, on the success.
But the biggest one by far is the, the wood.
Woods, way, way by far.
Yep.
Way, but, you know, remember these
Lump those all together.
These funds each grew 39%. Each fund grew 39%, including the cemetery funds. It's all, it's all in one bucket of, of cash.
This feels like something's
You mean the stock market's going crazy? Yeah, it is.
Well, I mean, I think
What we're invested in at some point.
The other side of it too is that that money needs to be utilized for the people it's intended to help.
Exactly, exactly.
And we need to do a better job on that.
Understood. It's just a report on the investment, the result of our revised eight IPS, which we approved some months ago, investment policy statement, for those who don't know what IPS is out there. But that, that's just, that was their report. Other funds we have invested also, but they're not part of the, of the trust and they were in a different portfolio, but that's, you know, the, the stock market has been wonderful for the last year and a half. Will continue, there's a lot of trepidation, but that's where we are at this moment in time. Lastly, because of some administrative things we didn't quite get done quickly, we do have a license for a, a draft license, it is a license, right, for Erie Road, Erie
It's a right-of-way license.
Right-of-way because the owner in the area wants to do underground utilities. I mention it because it came up late yesterday. I didn't put it on the agenda because it is a time factor. So I may, I want to work with Audra and company and Jeremy, we may have to call a one agenda item, a, a select board meeting in the next week or so to, to affect getting that approved. Just, just a heads up.
What, okay, is it, are we going to get some information ahead of time?
That's the point, that's the whole point, yes. The agreement, the attachments, all of that stuff will be coming, is, is part in advance of that, of that.
Why, why is it like an emergency for us that they want to do a project?
Well, we, hindsight, it probably should have been on November 3rd, select board, but glitch in the works didn't cause it to get there and didn't come up until late yesterday. And I said to them, well, you know, it's just too much to lump 24 hours before a select board meeting. So I just said, we'll try to, we'll try to affect some other solution for it because they want to get, you know, obviously doing the undergrounding before it gets too, too cold.
Yeah, but that just seems, we have to be careful about like special
Yeah, I agree.
Exceptions for people
I agree.
Because a lot of people would like us told a special
Yeah, I agree.
Select board meeting to approve their project so that they can start